Testing, testing, okay.
It's out of the mail. It's, uh, Mill Street recommendation.
Yeah, what is that? What is that Mill Street, uh? That's remediation or replacement. Reconstruction Mill Street. Oh, that's the, uh, street itself. Yeah, it needs it.
Yeah, but...
But there's more important streets than that.
Yeah, who's out there doing the work?
Well, I hear you. Hey, your girl, uh, the, the, what's her name? Mike, Mike used to work for.
Oh, Brenda?
Yeah, she got any connections in Detroit?
Lots. That was, that's her district, part of her district.
I need to get a, a wrecking license in Detroit. Can she help me?
Uh, she might.
I ain't greedy.
What number did it mean? There's no number on here. Discussion, forensic. I'm gonna talk onto that. And then the other one, are you gonna, are you signing it?
I already did.
Oh, my gosh!
Put your name on it anyway.
Why don't I talk after Gloria? That'd be great.
No.
Did you use it today?
High back end, uh, hat.
Maybe I did, uh, this. Gloria? Maybe I did, I think you did, I think you did, yeah. But I haven't, I haven't reached out to him yet. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. But you know what we were talking about in the meeting is, um, concern people have is...
Could you help me with that?
When you put those dumpsters out. Uh, and they're not picked up.
Hello, sir.
Yeah, when they're not picked up.
I give them three days. That they drop them on that Fri- that's Friday morning, and they pick them up on Monday.
Well, even Monday, though, uh, William, they, people, people put stuff there by them, and there's, there's nobody to put that stuff in the, in the dumpster.
Oh, I have a problem with Earl Wiggles. Because, you know, basically, a couple of items may be to the side, I just go with old men.
Well, see, you're a man.
Yeah, yeah.
But, see, if I'm, if I'm the coordinator, I can't do that.
The reason why I say that? Because that gives opportunity for people to clear out the dumping out of their backyard. Because it's not, when they clean it out, they gonna dump it. So that gives them opportunity to say, hey, I need to clean out my backyard. Now, and they giving me a, a dumpster slot to all this stuff in.
Well, so do you put any kind of a notice on the... I mean, how do, do you have any, anything unusual that you do that would help other people?
Actually, I just had, I shared email, and I also do social media. And I send it to all different groups.
But do you give them direction about not putting stuff there on the side?
Yes. I tell them everything should go in the dumpster. But somebody still gonna put something on the side, I'm gonna tell you. The thing is, is that it limits it from being dumped anyway. So for me, I rather have it in that one. Because like I said, where we put it up, you have to, it's off, it's, it's really back outside. So they, they, some people put carpet, you know. Sometimes they, usually what they can do, they can bag their truck up, and then dump it from the truck into the...
Yeah, right, right.
So, uh, some people don't always do what they're supposed to do, but that most people do.
Okay, alright.
Because if not, you gonna see, they gonna drop it, they gonna drop it right in front of the market.
Okay.
Or Perry Park. So... Yes, sir. Sergeant.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. The time is six o'clock PM. This February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Pontiac City Council meeting is hereby called to order. Uh, we proceed now with the invocation. I'd like to give the floor to the Honorable Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford to introduce this evening's invocation guest.
Good evening. Um, our guest for tonight is Pastor... I don't have it there for me.
Uh, we have with us Bishop Martin. Uh, he is with Victory Church, which is at Orchard Lake Road and Green Street, and in the Councilwoman's first council district. Uh, they have, uh, not only churches in Pontiac, but also in Wayne County and Genesee County, multiple locations in Detroit as well. So we wish, welcome Bishop Martin to the dais for this evening's invocation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come tonight to ask for and to invoke your presence and your blessings upon this august body of leaders. Dear God, in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, we humbly submit that you would guide us tonight, direct us tonight, and move us, Lord, in the direction that you would have us to go. I pray, Father, that everything that is done, and I pray that everything that is intended to be done, that it will happen for the benefit and even the betterment of the people of the city of Pontiac. Cause, dear God, that all that are involved today will be inspired by you to collectively seek the goodwill and the welfare of this community. Lift our leaders, lift their consciousness, bless their deliberations as they collaborate on making our community a better community, a stronger community, and even a more prosperous community. Doing this, God, will be careful to give you the honor and give you the praise and even the glory. We pray in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop Martin, and thank you for all that you and your congregation do for the beautiful city of Pontiac, Michigan.
It's an honor and a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Are we now, uh, if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, and then please remain standing for a moment of silence.
Let's allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could please remain standing for a moment of silence for those that, uh, we name now that our community has lost. Annie Briggs, Kevin Cottingham, Lysandra Hale, Louis Hicks, Aura Jennings Johnson, Patricia Kent, Louis Hermineo Mangual, Edmund McConney Senior, Harold Stiles, Emma Jean House, mother-in-law of Councilman William Parker Junior, Joseph Eslick, he was a pedestrian struck on Walton Boulevard in November. Uh, he has just succumbed to his injuries. And Antonio Mays, uh, struck down by violence at Woodward and Auburn just outside and across the street, um, from this very chamber. So if you could please join us for a moment of silence for those that we have named, and those in your neighborhoods, your family, and in your circles who we have not named. Thank you very much. You may be seated, of course. Clerk Doyle, please proceed with call of the roll.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker. Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, quorum being established. Could I please have a motion to excuse Councilman William Parker Junior for personal reasons?
I make the motion.
Support. Uh, it's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. Hearing no discussion, we do wanna, as we, uh, just relate, uh, send our condolences to the Parker family. He is traveling out of state, uh, to bury his mother-in-law. We send our, our love and condolences, uh, to him and his family. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on the, uh, motion to authorize, uh, the excusing of Councilmember William Parker Junior from the meeting for personal reasons.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
Thank you, clerk. That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, uh, that we approve this evening's agenda, uh, as prepared and before us. Are there any amendments, changes, clarifications, questions? Hearing no further discussions, speakers list exhausted. On the motion to, uh, approve this evening's agenda, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We're now at the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman, uh, that we approve this evening's consent agenda. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We're now at special presentations. Uh, we invite to, uh, the podium, uh, the Oakland Literacy Council, and specifically their executive director, Lisa Macheski, uh, for sharing more information about their Pontiac Adult Literacy Initiatives. Welcome, one and all, and let us know who you've got here. Welcome.
All right, well, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to tell you a little bit more about the Oakland Literacy Council and what we've been up to the past couple of years. My name is Lisa Macheski, I'm the executive director. I've been there for about six years. And with me today is Amanda Poe, who is our student coordinator. So she's the first person that people meet when they, um, come into our program. Nearly thirty-eight years ago, a small grassroots organization was founded here in Pontiac to help adults learn to read. Since that time, thousands of volunteer tutors have helped learners gain skills, and I would argue, most importantly, confidence, and have formed meaningful relationships along the way. Oakland Literacy Council provides free one-on-one tutoring help for over three hundred adults each year. We help those needing to increase their reading, math, conversational English language, and digital literacy skills. Many of you know about our reading and English language services, but over the past two years, we have added math and digital literacy because the community needs these efforts. We serve those with skills less than ninth grade, even those who do have high school diplomas, but their skills are not up to par for what our workforce needs are. And we will get you ready to pursue GED work, take trade exams, help your children in school, and apply for the next job. In honor of Valentine's Day, I want to tell you a little bit about one of our, um, most recent students. One of his goals is to be able to write a love letter to his new lady interest. So the goals are very diverse, but they're all about making sure literacy is an important part of your life. In addition to one, oh, we serve those with lessons at ninth grade. Um, we also have specialized curriculum for those with dyslexia or other reading disabilities. That's something that we've added recently, and we're seeing some great progress by really, um, using a different mode of instruction for those with, um, dyslexia. In addition to one-on-one tutoring, we offer, uh, we also offer online curriculum using Burlington English, Essential Education, and Voxi, and small groups, um, health literacy, um, getting a job, book clubs, general conversation, really using lots of skills around making sure that people are using their language skills in a wide variety of ways. We can also provide laptops and hotspots. Right now, most of our, um, instruction is through online, through Zoom and other methods, um, which people are finding very convenient. You don't have to transport, you don't have to worry about transportation, childcare issues are a little bit less. Before and in the future, we hope, tutors and learners met at libraries, churches, coffee shops, and other public spaces. But we come to you. It's a one-on-one relationship in your local community, even if your local community is online. Oakland Literacy is a critical part of the workforce development system here in the city of Pontiac. We work closely with Michigan Works and have a strong relationship with OCC, the Pontiac Chamber, TDC, Oakland University, and Pontiac Adult Education. We are an essential link to get more individuals into the Oakland eighty pipeline. We were recently funded by United Way for our work in the city of Pontiac, just for our work in the city of Pontiac. This ninety thousand dollar grant helped us build strong relationships and provide the extra support city residents needed, especially in the time of COVID. Unfortunately, the United Way has decided that adult literacy is no longer a priority for them. We strongly believe that it is an important priority and would accept any help to help keep this intentional effort fully funded. We would also like you to help spread the word about our services to those who need to skill up and those who might want to volunteer as a tutor, especially our math services. It's a relatively new program, and we are looking for volunteer tutors. Um, I hope you guys have questions, because I love answering questions.
Thank you very much for that. Those that wish to be recognized, Councilman Nicholson.
Hi, thank you for being here tonight. Um, can you tell us a little bit more about the intake process? Um, kind of maybe how you eliminate barriers to, to some of these things that some of our adults can feel some, some shame surrounding?
Well, first of all, we want to know that everyone is open to our services, and everybody has struggles, right? So that's why we welcome people, um, as, um, as an individual, and it's all about their individual needs. We do require a, um, entrance, we, it's test just because people know the vernacular of a test, but it really is just to see where you're at. Just to, you know, we're gonna take you a math test, or we're gonna take you an English test. We are just gonna see where you're at, so that we know where to start you, what curriculum to use, how to pair you with a tutor, that sort of thing. And we also are state-funded, so it's one of the requirements. So one of the first things you will, um, encounter, you could go on our website, um, I'm interested, we'll contact you, either text or email or phone, and then we'll ask you to kind of set up an appointment for, um, that, taking that test. Now, taking that test can happen in our office or virtually. Um, it depends on what people need. Um, we offer, um, testing dates on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and even Saturdays from nine, at either nine-thirty or, um, one-thirty. And then after that, you know, we talk about what they need, you find, you know, say, yeah, I want to be a part of this program. We talk about the different obligations you have as a learner, and also what kinds of things we offer. And then we get you matched up.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford.
Yes, what is the statistics of people who graduate with the GED program? And on how many, um, what is the percentage of students that actually go to another form of a higher education, a higher learning?
Well, so we focus on the lowest level learners. And most of our, um, students that are enrolled in our program are ESL learners. So that's not necessarily a goal that they would have for the GED. We don't offer directly GED programming. We offer getting you ready for GED, making sure that you have skills at, you know, above the ninth grade level, so that you can really, um, engage in that kind of work. We don't necessarily track our students beyond that. We had a hundred and five, um, educational functional gains last year. So in, um, it goes from like beginning literacy to intermediate literacy. Our students start at wide varieties of places. We are really seeing a strong increase in the number of gains that we see every year, and that's what we measure. We expect, um, students to have a gain. And we had about forty percent, um, of our students enrolled last year receive an educational gain.
Uh, lastly, um, how does one go about actually donating, um, uh, to the, uh, program? Do you have a website?
We do. So OaklandLiteracy.com. There's kind of, we look at three different audiences, um, for our services. We have the donors and the tutors, um, and then we also have our students. So there's a donate button online, so that...
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Others that wish to have the floor. With that, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
I was going to wait till last, because mine's a comment. Uh, as a educator, well, for now former educator, I really, uh, love what you're doing, uh, especially because I worked at high school towards the, the last part of it. And there are a lot of kids who, of course, end up becoming the adults who, who need this, uh, literacy help. And I think it's a, it's a great thing to actually focus on the group of people who have entered adulthood, who still need, uh, the help, who need, who need the education. And they shouldn't feel, uh, ashamed of any sore about, uh, taking that next step and, you know, learning more and essentially getting to where they need to be. Um, so thank you so much for doing this work.
Yeah, we really are focused a little more on that young adult population, um, in the next year. It's really trying to make sure that, we know with COVID, educate, everybody's education was all messed up, you know? So there's lots of reasons why people didn't necessarily get the skills that they need. And we know that we need to make sure that that young adult audience really gets those skills so that they get into those high-wage jobs.
Yeah, because I, I talked through totally. Uh, so I, I definitely know, know that feeling. So again, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman James.
Yes, I'd just like to say that it's a great program. I am a former tutor, and I really enjoyed the time that I spent tutoring, uh, students. I met some good lifelong, uh, people that I still, you know, are, is in, in contact with. So it is a great program. And it's a great opportunity to get involved and really get to be able to help someone one-on-one. So thank you very much for coming and sharing what you, you guys do.
And for the audience, we have, um, if you want a tutor, we're always looking for tutors. And then on the other side, if you want to become a learner.
Thank you. Others that wish to be recognized? With that, I do want to really emphasize that it's a, uh, chronic and enduring challenge that we have in our community in terms of ongoing literacy challenges. And so we're grateful for your partnership and your interest in, uh, Pontiac specifically. And as you shared, you're rooted in, in that, that's sort of the, the origins of the organization. And I did, of course, already connect you with the superintendent of our public school district and their school board president, um, so that way you can bolster your collaboration with our public school district as well. Um, but I think the, the underlining message is that there's opportunities for all participants in our community at any level to either support, get the word out, or connect those that, uh, especially can benefit from those services. Um, and to conclude, would you like to, uh, allow your, your compatriot to take the mic? Tell us who you are.
I'm Amanda Poe.
What are you passionate about in terms of advancing literacy?
Okay, I'm Amanda Poe, and, um, I'm the student coordinator. I'm passionate about helping students get through, you know, the process and building confidence about themselves.
Very good. Thank you both for being here. We now proceed to our next special presentation, uh, spotlighting Pontiac's, uh, black history, specifically, uh, the black musical excellence uh, that has been produced by our community. Uh, this evening's presenter, Mr. Quincy Stewart, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, President McGinnis. And I'm here to tell you that, uh, Catherine Williams, being very modest, um, I call her Catherine Williams. And the, and the reason why is because she was my tutor back in high school and, uh, did a, an outstanding job of keeping up with my trifling behind. And I was trifling what I did. That's right, don't say nothing, that's right, there you go. All right. First, I would like to thank President McGinnis for not only providing time for this presentation, but for the timely and efficacious manner in which he contacted me unsolicited, merely on the offhand suggestion I made prior to my speech last week. It is that kind of keen perception and listening skills needed for decades in these proceedings that have been sorely missing. That said, this short presentation is to give a brief synopsis of the great tradition of musicians, singers, composers, and performers who hail from Pontiac. As a musician, I've been very fortunate to have come up in a time where that, that tradition was very much alive. And also, at least from the early nineteen seventies until now, have been a participant in the Pontiac music community, an august body of creative, dedicated, talented, and professional musicians indeed. Many have passed on and left a legacy of recordings and memorable performances. Parenthetically, let me say that Pontiac is a very tight-knit community that has its advantages and disadvantages. And somewhere I read that a prophet has no honor in his own country. This adage seems to have some validity, validity as it relates to a small place like Pontiac. He or she who is common and overlooked in Pontiac is prized elsewhere. They see us with fresh eyes and fresh ears and appreciate the awesome talent that has come from this community. At one time, Pontiac was so inundated with talent that it became spoiled. There was a time when catching a band was as easy as putting your finger in the wind on a Friday night. And wherever you felt the wind go in that direction, you would eventually find a band, an act, or a show. One reason is that the public school system churned out literate, reading, qualified musicians by the dozens. With the advent of so-called charter schools, and its resources and funding became divvied up, people bought into the fallacious assumption that public schools were being bested. In reality, when we lost our arts programs, as funding dried up for the band teachers, choir teachers, visual art teachers, and drama teachers, we began to see a commensurate precipitous drop in new young talent. Literate musicians who could read, write, and analyze music, who could show enough play, became fewer and fewer as band programs began to drop off the radar, one by one. As a sixth grader, under the direction of Mr. Kenyon at Franklin Elementary School on Pontiac's far south side, I first played the trumpet. And that was in nineteen sixty-nine. I went on, uh, the, to continue those studies throughout junior and high school. It inspired me to take piano, learn the guitar, bass, to sing, write, and compose, all that from initial contact with a serious band teacher whose infectious love for his craft rubbed off on many of us. Had I not had that opportunity, that initial exposure to music, I'm not sure what would have happened. The exposure produced the famous Jones Brothers. That, that exposure produced the famous Jones Brothers, who eventually moved to Bagley Street near Jackson, with all three attending Washington Junior High and Pontiac High, not Pontiac Northern, which was later renamed Pontiac Central High School. Hank Jones, the eldest of the three brothers, went on to play with everyone in the industry. The only one to have not been born in Pontiac, Hank Jones, recorded over sixty albums. The list of notables he has played with is far too voluminous for me to even attempt to cite. Tenor saxophonist Lucky Thompson is the first person to expose Hank Jones to the greater jazz world, and the rest is history. Thad Jones, like the rest of his brothers, came from a musical family. His mother, Olivia, was musically inclined. Thad is self-taught in the sense he attended no conservatories or college-level music classes. Yet, he achieved high mastery on the cor- on the cornet and mastered the art of composing and arranging. His compositions are today considered very difficult to play, demanding and a high degree, demanding a high degree of musicianship. He first started with the Count Basie, with Count Basie, and his compositions and arrangements got him much notoriety and became an in-demand arranger for many years. He never played trumpet very much, but preferred the sound of the small, uh, the slightly smaller cornet. He died very early at the age of sixty-three in Copenhagen, Denmark, where he resided for many years. Lastly, Elvin Jones was a master drummer who learned his basic rudiments and drumming skills at Washington Junior High School. He, he, he used his watch, he used to watch circus bands and parades go by his house on Orchard Lake, then Bagley, and caught a love for drumming from watching those bands. After serving in the army, Jones returned to the area and began playing in Detroit clubs. By nineteen sixty, he was playing with the legendary John Coltrane and developed a bombastic, freewheeling style of drumming that revolutionized how the drums could be interpreted as not just a rhythmic instrument, but a melodic instrument. Some of the relatives of the Jones family, the Gambles, are yet here in Pontiac. Recently, Charlene's, Charlene's Bar downtown had some artwork commissioned to honor the Jones Brothers, which presently hangs near the entrance. What is not known is that the Jones Brothers had other relatives who played on a world-class level but not got, not got the same notoriety. The late drummer nephew Peter Jones, take note of some of these names I'm throwing out, and saxophonist Joe Gamble, Jojo Gamble, who was a close personal friend of mine, who also turned my musical life around as a mentor, and when he introduced me to jazz at Pontiac Central and to the McConner Brothers, Ubudan Rashid, whom I will elaborate on later, were outstanding talents. Some would say that Peter was as good as Elvin on the drums, and I had the honor to play with him, and I would have to agree. Still alive is flutist Hank Gamble, named after his famous uncle and grandfather, who played a major role in Pontiac music during the nineteen seventies and eighties. Pontiac producer sax man Dangerous Dan Turner, who played with Ray Charles for many years, who stayed right over on Lake Street. Our own famous Ronnie McNear, who had a solo career with Motown, recorded with Tina Marie and others, and is presently a four-top, inspired so many of us who are a half-generation or so behind him. To this day, he has never claimed to be from anywhere in interviews, even when he was featured on Soul Train, but from Pontiac. On one episode of Soul Train, the host Don Cornelius, some of you old enough to remember who that is, some of you don't, shortened up an interview with Ronnie, and he didn't get a chance to say Pontiac. On the next Soul Train interview he did after singing with Tina Marie, Ronnie corrected Cornelius right on TV and made sure that he knew, the world knew he was from Pontiac. Ronnie is still an inspiration and a world-renowned performer. The late Bubby Hatchett was a great pianist from Pontiac, whom I had the pleasure of playing with as a green, not-so-good-sounding teenager at a place on Woodward back in the day called the Playa Mar Lounge. It is now an insurance company not too far from the railroad tracks by M-one concourse headed north. Now, I'm starting, stuff, stuff I'm starting to talk about, all the old heads are gonna know about that. People like old Chuck Johnson sitting up there, he knows about all that. I'm gonna play with you a bit, Chuck, I'm sorry. Bubby recorded with several people, and in particular with local saxophonist Joe Thurman, on his own album entitled A Lovely Woman, recorded right here in Pontiac. Bubby also taught at Oakland University, along with my trumpet teacher Detroit's own Herbie Williams, who besides playing with the great Charlie Parker, was also the house trumpet player for Motown during its heyday in the nineteen sixties. I would be remiss if I didn't at least mention that the, all the great church organists in this town, who literally could compete with anyone, anywhere, not the least of which was our own Junior Johnson from over in Johnson Temple. There are just too many to mention. This brings me to mention Marcus and Tiffany Cummings. I first recall hearing Marcus Cummings at a nightclub in Glenwood Plaza's heyday, and I'm really going back now, called the Golden Garter. I was so mesmerized by Cummings' vocals and keyboard skills that it inspired me to improve my singing and playing. He sounded so much like Donny Hathaway that it was scary. He was with... He was with Ronnie McNear. Ronnie did everything in his power to get Marcus into the higher ends of the business, but Marcus saw fit to stay here. His sister Tiffany, the late Tiffany Cummings, was a powerhouse singer who could really bring the roof down at churches, in plays, at gigs, and on recordings. I was fortunate to have her on my upcoming album, Soul Folk, which I hope to have out finally by the summer. She passed four years ago, and my life has never been the same. We were very close, and she was a consummate professional. She had a starring role in the stage play "A Good Man Is Hard to Find," which played on stages from New York to California. She also sang with Aretha Franklin on the song "Someday We'll All Be Free" on the Spike Lee movie Malcolm X. You can hear her in the background. She has performed with the Clark Sisters, Take Six, The Winans, and many more. Pontiac lost a unique voice that was dipped in love and then dipped back out onto the people. This also brings to mind the late, great Vena Sue Anderson. She was an outstanding entertainer whom, once again, I had the honor to perform with and record an album with. As you recall, she managed the golf course tap room before it was sold for pennies on the dollar during the outrageous tyrannical period of so-called emergency management. Another Pontiac native, Paula Michelle, a PCH grad, was a Raylette with Ray Charles for many years. Pontiac singers are so numerous, I will never get to them all. Bonita Mans, affectionately known as Nini Mans, Marcus Lewis, Anthony White, and of course, our own Melanie Rutherford and countless others. Jerry Allen, who died much too young at age sixty, was an outstanding pianist who claimed national fame as a composer, bandleader, and educator. When we began to discuss bands from Pontiac and those who were members, I finally recall going to Battles of the Bands at the Eagle Theater downtown. In Pontiac, during the mid-to-late 60s, right through the 1970s and early 80s, here is a partial list of bands and some of the star players in them. The Soulful Determinations, which later became Instant Groove with Michael Crump, sport coat Ronnie Overton, trumpeter George Glazier, who was my inspiration on trumpet, Griswold on Kungas, and Trouble Band with great guitarist Stanley Jeter, who ended up on a brief stint with the Funkadelics, whom you all now know as Parliament, his brother bassist Robert Jeter, and Hesey Atkins on piano. You have The Night of the Living Dead with the Rouse Brothers, Third Degree Band, which later became a band called Sunship, with the late, great percussionist Johnny Hooker Borders, keyboardist Darryl Carter, George Glazier on trumpet, Eric Donaldson, and I think even Eric Johnson on bass, and Donald Gohegan on guitar. There was Darryl Johnson and Leroy's Alexander's Band, The Creations, over on Cedar Dale, the guy who owned his old Speedy's Cleaners over on Woodward by the railroad tracks even had a great Mexican band whose name I can't remember. One of the best-kept secrets in Pontiac is the guitarist we call Perkins, who still plays on a very high level but never performs. On Judson Street, we had the Black Finger Experience, later called Phase Four, which included Todd Jernigan, trombonist Bryce Baxter, Berklee College of Music graduate Danny Carthanes, flutist Tony Samuel, guitarist Kevin Chumley, myself on trumpet, and Duane Jernigan on drums. We were managed by one of the Humphreys from the South Side. The first band I ever played in 1971 was guitarist, then drummer Tyrone Parker, organist Bruce Pope, Danny Carthanes, and the late Bruce Washington on bass. One of the more famous bands in a regional sense was Freedom Sound Company. I was also in this band as a fifteen-year-old, and then with fourteen-year-old Kenny Birch, who is now a very successful local attorney, but still plays, hell of a player, too, and who went on to play with the now-famous Orange Lake Drive. Freedom Sound Company also included the late Aldra Sneed on drums, Bruce Pope on piano, and a truly gifted Jimi Hendrix-style guitar player, Amos Johnson Jr., the son of Pastor Amos Johnson. Other bands in Pontiac were the famous Raw Souls, a dance-and-show band with brothers Country on bass and Billy Williams, who used to manage the library, on sax, James Perkins on guitar, myself and the late Ronnie Gentry on drums. Pontiac produced some great drummers besides Elvin Jones, and I can't not name them all, but those who stand out were the late, great Hooker Borders, who is Bubby's father, if you guys know Bubby. Romo, Ronnie Gentry, Chris Donaldson, Keith Bubby Webb, Darryl Avant, Larry Webb, Duane Jernigan, Mark Threets, Reggie Carthanes, Raymond Foster, Stacey Abdul, Willie Black Jr., Avery Hatchett, Albert Hatchett, that's right, Albert Hatchett, played in the Monterey Jazz Festival, I believe it was. Griswold, Red Overton, Aldra Sneed, and so many others. Other bands included Crosswinds Band on the north side of town with Avery Hatchett on drums, Mike Heron, Dr. Mike Heron, on sax, brilliant Chick Corea-like keyboard player Brian Yancy on piano, Bruce Washington on bass, Jimmy Warren on guitar, Colleen Carpenter and Johnny White on vocals. I'm almost done. As we move into the 1980s, bands got fewer but were still enough to keep the town entertained. As crack cocaine began to take towns apart like termites to wood, it took a toll on Pontiac as well. Out of that malaise came one out of Pontiac, last true bands by the name of the Yujima Jazz Ensemble. Beginning in 1983, the original jazz quintets members consisted of myself, who was the founder, Bruce Washington on bass, Avery Hatchett on drums, Michael Heron on sax, who was now a prominent physician in the Atlanta area, and Hesey Atkins on piano. Playing with us often was the great Robert Reeves on saxophone and occasionally Brian Yancy on piano. The group went on to win the Eastern University Jazz Competition in 1983, beating eighteen bands from around the state, and went on to perform the following year in Montrose, Switzerland, at the jazz festival of that same name. The group went on to open for the Count Basie Orchestra, Spiro Jarrett, and hosts of other notables. The group lasted for thirteen years and kept jazz alive in this town. One of Pontiac's international jazz stars right now is Dr. Demani Phillips, a Pontiac Northern graduate, who is the son of former Mayor Clarence Phillips, who is presently professor of African-American Studies and Jazz Saxophone at the University of Iowa. He has performed all over the world, and as an educator, has published two books, recorded four outstanding albums, which I'm proud to say I'm on one of them, and has just released his latest album, which is blowing up on Spotify and other platforms and getting lots of airplay. Please, if you can, support Demani Phillips's album. Demani is without question at the pinnacle of achievement, both in academia and his artistry, with little to no acclaim in his own hometown. Hopefully, I'll change with this speech. Lastly, I can only just mention the next set of great artists, as time won't permit me to mention all their accomplishments. Robert Williamson, who was a highly sought-after and recognized keyboardist and singer in Florida, Hump Dawson, Bruce Pope, Wilona Green, an outstanding flutist. Her sisters were known as the Green Sisters, as well as the Rick Sisters, Trina, Donza, and Cheryl, both fine singing families. And let's not even try and talk about the Iceman, the incomparable Bill Summers, who was probably one of the best bass players, pound-for-pound, I've ever played with. The late flutist Lorenzo Folks Senior, guitarist Paul Crowder, and the outstanding keyboard player in high demand everywhere, Mr. Jeff Campbell. There was Tyrone Parker's TP Corporation. You also have trumpeter Darryl Heron, the best-kept secret on trumpets since Thad Jones. Also, our own great Gwen Fox, singer extraordinaire, Tim Wims, and our list would not be complete without the great Charles Anthony, who passed away last year and gave us so much music during his short life that will stand the test of time. Trombonist Rob Smith, clarinetist Scott Reeves, band director Del Wise, Clifford Sykes, choir director Gil Jackson from PCH, made much of this possible through education. The McConnors, Ubudan Rashid, there is not enough time nor room to adequately discuss the impact they had on young black men and musicians throughout the years. Such notables would fall through Ubudas like Farouk Zibay, members of the famed group Rio Galaxies, and many older cats like Ted Russell. And wrapping this up, you have the Green Brothers, and Aaron and Gabriel, both students of mine have gone on to be premier musicians, the late Billy Coward, an outstanding percussionist, Jamie and Chris Keys, the Keys Brothers, outstanding keyboard players, Cedric LeDuff, vocalist Danny Guy, Joanne Bias, and our own Tony Jefferson. There are more, ladies and gentlemen, but as you can see from this little exposé, that Pontiac has been a mecca of musical talent for decades, and again, I haven't covered everybody, especially if you take in consideration all the churches, the early-to-mid 20th-century musicians, and the early blues and swing eras that I can't cover right now. All of the musicians used to play in the parking lot next to Gabby's Store on the East Side, mostly blues. I will get to them later in another presentation. Now, let me end with this. This is for the old heads, I'm just gonna drop some names and walk off, drop the mic. Only the old heads will even know the spots I'm about to drop. Cooley's General Store, Little Pig's Barbecue, Miss Ann's Store, Orchard Furniture, Skating Rink, Boxing Gym, The Hole, Persley's Funeral Home, Woodward's Barbecue, Bagley Hotel, The Old Trinity Church, Surfside Strip Mall, Mr. Cora's Ice and Cold, Southwest Activity Center, used to be Bagley School, Carruthers Funeral Home, and by the way, the Bowen Center was actually first the Carruthers Funeral Home. Fish House Fats. The only people that laughed at that are people who know what he did. Black Betty, the only people know about that, so I ain't gonna elaborate. William F. Davis Funeral Home, Bob Bowen's Barbershop, The Humphreys, Club Eighty-Eight or the Mellow Lane, General Auto Parts, Pete's Lunch on Low, The Big Six, Pool Hall, Balkin Building, Watkins Garage, The Blue Note, Jones Cleaners, Miss Louisa's Hair Salon, BMW Drugstore, Rendezvous Diner, Jones Beauty Shop, Miss Roach's Tea Room, Deb's Hall, DAV Hall, Casey Hall, Amets, The Eagle Theater, The Green Door, The Do-Drop Inn, Casper's Bar, Teddy's Bar, Gabby's, Lois Lounge, OJ's, Big Art, SAP, Ducky's, Will Black, Cancellations, King Briggs, Shaw's Jewellers, Nizers, Kresge's, Griff's, Ahmed's, Garlock's, The Silverdime, Singleton Realty, Roseland Skating Rink, Sims, Robert Hall's, Flag Brothers, and Pants galore.
Thank you very much. We have a hand. Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
So first of all, so me and you are gonna need to connect more after this, because seriously, I come from a jazz family. I lived in Pontiac my entire life, so you may know my uncle, Darren C. Jones.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, my uncle Darren C. That is the reason why I play music.
Right.
My old music teacher at ATAP, because it was the only time that that charter school had a music program. You know my teacher, well, Ryan Tippado.
Yes, yes.
He's the reason why I started playing music in the first place. So when you talk about how important it is that schools have these programs, that's how it starts.
Absolutely.
When I left ATAP, like, you know, I got lucky, we had a music program until I was about in high school, now they're gone.
Yes.
And it's really difficult looking at these groups of kids who's like, yeah, don't get me wrong, I love rap music. Again, I grew up after 2000 in Pontiac. What option did I have? But it's disheartening to see what's happening now, where like, the kids don't get the same love that I got, being able to learn how to read music on the piano, being able to learn drumming through bucket drums. Now I'm sitting here, my fiance's watching at home, seeing how much money I've spent on music equipment due to the love that I have. I mean, between drums, bass, guitar, it's such an important part of not only just growth as a person, but especially in communities of color, and black communities at that, it's so important how much music has meant to just who we are.
Well, music literacy is what I believe in. I am a band teacher, and I teach in Harper Woods Middle School, and I've taught at Detroit Central High School and other places, and I can tell you that my thing is, if we're gonna believe in literacy all the way around, whether it's being able to read anything, I truly believe in music literacy, that a person should be able to read music, write music, and you wouldn't want a doctor who just has a hobby that wants to work on you.
Exactly. But with that, Pontiac has such an unignorable musical history, I mean, just from everything that you named. Like, I think it's, it would be just extremely stupid of us to not acknowledge that, not to really solidify that into the books, because it's, again, such an important part. I mean, yes, we have the Pontiac car, but again, we've seen that factory come and go, but like, the musical history that we have here, it's not a factory that can be torn down. And I think that what you're doing, and hopefully what the city does moving forward, and of course, the Pioneer Society, in making sure that we, like, put into stone the important musical history that we have here in the city of Pontiac.
Well, I think President McGinnis has done a really good thing because this is seen by a lot of people, and so people begin to get educated about some of these musicians who have passed on and have done some great things, and some of those places that I mentioned that some, the people who remember those places, one day in ten, fifteen, twenty years, we won't be around. So it's important to orally pass this history on, if nothing else.
Yeah, but that's all my time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Very briefly, if you're willing to share a printed copy of that, we can add it to the small manuscripts at the Historical Studies Research Library.
Absolutely, I'd be glad to. As a matter of fact, I was a member there, and I'm gonna rejoin.
But it is very fitting that that be added there for centuries to come, so that way it's captured, and thank you so much for not only your living history, but the research that also went with that. I want to recognize Councilwoman Rutherford last, because she is our musical royalty. So, President Protam Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First, I just want to thank you for your powerful historical perspective of music in Pontiac. I'm someone that, my mother's a piano organist, my grandmother's a piano organist, I grew up playing percussion, so I know just how important it is to get children involved in music. I knew some of those individuals that you mentioned, but man, you mentioned a lot, and I'm looking, you know, I'm a lover of jazz.
Right.
I've got a used collection, so I definitely have to see what you have and, you know, kind of like turn me on to some Pontiac finest.
I'd be more than happy to, more than happy to.
Thank you.
We can do it together.
Mayor Grimal, I'm saving the exclamation point. Mayor Grimal?
I'll be brief. That was awesome, Quincy, that was just really, really great, and I can't think of a better person to give that lesson and that education, because you are both a student of music and what my mentor, Hubert Price, always used to call a student of history. So, thank you for sharing all that wisdom with us.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor, before I, without further ado, the Melanie Rutherford Experience, you have the floor.
I'm not easily moved by most things, but what you did today is what we needed to hear to be reminded of the greatness that comes from Pontiac. And it wasn't just because you mentioned me, it's because you mentioned the people who oftentimes go away without any fanfare, especially Tiffany Cummings, who was my mentor, and Johnny Hooker, and Keith Bubby Webb. And so I say this humbly, I thank you for doing that for me. I thank you for letting the community know that we do have greatness in our bones, greatness in our DNA, greatness in our community, and let no one put us under. And it takes great courage and tenacity and wit to speak unapologetically, and you are my friend, unapologetically dope, and I thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. You have final remarks, if anything?
Other than the fact that I appreciate deeply, for many years I've stood at this podium in a different capacity, let's say, in terms of my, some of my stances, but it's good that the community can see that there's another side besides that, and that is, I am an artist in this town. I am a musician, I've been a musician all this time, and I'm proud to be from Pontiac. And wherever I go, wherever I play, I don't say, a lot of people will say, I'm from the Detroit area and all that kind of mess, you know? And you have people like Pinklin Thomas, who, the heavyweight champion of the world, everywhere he went, he said, "I'm from Pontiac," because he knew he had to come back here. And so those of us who do anything great, make sure you know, if you come back here, you know Pontiac's a close community, and you know how we do, sometimes we'll get on you. So, all we say, if you're from Pontiac, say it, and say it proudly.
Thank you, sir. Thank you again. We now move on to recognition of elected officials. We'll be hearing from her shortly on another business item, but I do want to acknowledge that we have Pontiac Library Board Trustee, Rosie Lance Richardson, with us in the audience, and Library Trustee Emeritus, H. Bill Maxey, and we have Council Members Emeritus Gloria Miller and Patrice Waterman, and Mayor Emeritus Dr. Deirdre Waterman. And in case she didn't sign up, I do want to take a point of privilege and say good evening to Ms. Shayla Rae, who is Pontiac black history manifested, and just wanted to reiterate our condolences on the loss of your beloved and such an influential sister, Demetra Leonard. What an amazing pillar of the Pontiac community, so just wanted to share some valentines with you, love with you right now. Any current elected officials that wish to be recognized? Hearing none, we're now at Agenda Address. President Protam Carrington, any requests for Agenda Address?
Yes, sir. Patrice Waterman.
Good evening.
Members of the 11th Council and Mayor, I'm here tonight to place on record the egregious handling of city funds pertaining to items seven, eight, and nine, from previous administration, the mayor, the finance director, and city attorney. The previous mayor was allowed to use funds that the 10th Council did not allocate in the budget. Removal of such actions were done by resolution and during budget hearings. These people should be held accountable. Item number seven, for $72,000 for the mayor to have a second state of the city. Item number eight is overbudgeted for the law firm. Item number nine, $182,000 for the recreational center payments to the tune of $26,000 and change for seven months. In hindsight, this was malfeasance of funds, and that is my opinion. And there is no justification for these actions. for these actions. This is not a reflection upon this mayor, Mayor Grimal, nor this 11th Council. You have to take care of what's before you, and it is so unfortunate. But I would suggest that you send these matters to your finance subcommittee for further resolution. In closing, members of council, please understand that the budget is your fiduciary responsibility. Please understand that. Also, the notes that I presented to you at your transition sessions, examine them thoroughly. It will explain to you what is going on now. Mr. Mayor, I want to personally thank you for acknowledging the 10th Council's at your swearing-in ceremony, and I wanna thank you for the gift. Thank you kindly, sir. Also, I wanna thank Councilwoman Minister James for acknowledging what some of the things the 10th Council did. Thank you very much, Councilwoman. And in closing, I say thank you and good night.
Uh, thank you. Gloria Miller, you, you're on here twice. Are you speaking concerning agenda items?
Yep. My fellow, uh, colleague, uh, good seeing you. I too, I'm down here tonight to talk about the budget. I pulled it last night, and I couldn't believe what I was seeing. We got over $688,000, you guys gonna do a budget amendment for? Really? First of all, we have allegedly, per the mayor, a deficit, okay? Later, I asked you later, uh, Mayor, you said we have a structural deficit. A lot of my constituents doesn't understand what's the difference between the structural and the general fund of having the 19 million. I was, I asked you that later. But I'm gonna address the general item of the, of the five or six items on the budget. There's no way. I too feel that you should wait and get your audit first, because you probably gonna find a lot of more discrepancies. And then what you gonna do, just keep howling on, and then we keep going deeper in the hole? Because these items, it's just like erasing the 10th Council, like, we didn't see all this stuff. We, it was a reason that they weren't paid, and I went through Giro Marco just to add them up. They have the budget amendment tonight of those items, three hundred and some thousand dollars. This is unabsinthe crazy. I couldn't believe it last night. I was sitting up reading it and adding up things. I'm just asking the council, I just wanna see what happens tonight, because that would be really absinine for the residents to pay this kinda money to an administration. You need to have your forensic audit, and so they can find all the discrepancies. That's what they do. And allow this council just to run the day-to-day operations of the city till you see where you are. You're going into the blind and you don't know where you are, because I'm sure you're gonna find more things that probably been done. Because I was there, all, while they said, I was up there screaming, you're gonna see a lot of stuff. And all I'm saying to this council is, y- y- you're, you're, you're covered, it's, to me, it's like a cover-up. Don't do that. Put it out there for the citizens, see what happened with this last council, and how the spending went awry. Spending two hundred some thousand dollars for the rec center, I screamed and hollered up there for five, six months. It stopped, but it wasn't stopped. Now I'm asking you, Mayor, and the council, you guys up there, people elect you, tell them what happened. Tell them the story. Show them what happened, because we got a lot of money missing. I said, "I'm gonna put it out there", 'cause I was on council, I know what I'm talking about. I have the books. And all I wanna say to everyone, three hundred some thousand to Giro Marco, Giro Marco worked here, they know what happened. They were working for the mayor. Why didn't they get paid? Her, her string is in her hands.
That concludes your time.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Billy Swazer.
If you prefer public comment, we can make that adjustment, if that's when you want to sign up.
Good evening. Although I'm supposed to be on vacation, I'd gotten so many calls about just the thing, uh, Councilwoman Miller and, uh, Patrice Waterman were talking about, that I thought I needed to come to set that correct. And I think it may have been something you inadvertently said, uh, Mayor Grimal, which you partially corrected, but there's still a lot of confusion. And that's what you said at, that, uh, I think you referred that there was a deficit. And people said, "Wait a minute, Mayor, we don't have a deficit. I thought you told us there is a surplus." There is a surplus, and there has been for the last, uh, at least three years. I think we started with $19 million about three years ago. I don't have the finance director here, but about that. And it's come down a little bit, as we've had, uh, savings to spend on extra services for people. So, when I started out, we were way down here, okay? Started out with $20 million deficit, my first buzzed. That was a real deficit.
Dr. Waterman, are you addressing an item on the agenda?
I am, because it's, it alluded that this was the reason for the forensic audit.
Order, please. This is Agenda Address.
It alluded that this was the reason for the forensic audit, and that's what people don't understand.
Keep it tight to the Agenda Address, please.
That's what I'm addressing.
Please do.
I'm addressing the forensic audit. So, that is where we were, but you gave, took about a 10 minutes. So I'm just trying to correct what people were inferred. They said there's a forensic audit, because there's a deficit. There is no deficit. We have a surplus, okay? It's been a surplus every year for the last three years. Uh, the, we have almost 50% at one time. The normal, uh, requirement for a city of our size is about this much of a surplus. But we have this much more than we actually need. So what happens is, that gives us a little extra that we can spend every year for services we want to do, all right? So it's been coming down a little bit, as we've had this, it's like having more savings in the bank, so you can buy a bigger car, things like that. That's what's happening with the city. Last couple weeks ago, when we had the snow, everybody was happy that they started the snow plowing with three inches of snow, not like six inches like we had before. But because we had this surplus, the count, this, the, uh, council before this one said, "Let's start the snow plowing at three inches." That cost twice as much. So with that surplus, we've been spending a little extra for more services. Now, Mayor, you corrected part of that. It's not a deficit, it's a surplus that we are spending down on. It's because we don't need this much. You know, cities require about this much.
That concludes your time.
Okay. You took about 10 minutes of my time, but I think I just, I think I got the idea.
Order, order. I stopped the clock, as the audience can see, to recompensate for that.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to correct that, because that's a misconception that was put out, and people had that question.
Protam Carrington, are there any other Agenda Address requests?
Uh, yes. Um, Ms. Shayla Ray, are you here for Agenda Address or various items that are not on the agenda tonight? Okay.
We'll shift you to public comment.
Yes. Uh, and we have one more name, uh, President, I can't, I can't read it.
H. Bill Maxey. Mr. Maxey, are you here for public comment or Agenda Address?
Public, public.
Okay.
All right. That's all for Agenda Address.
Thank you. We're now at discussion items. Uh, Mayor Grimal Administration, forensic audit process, progress update. You have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Um, so, uh, it, I'll, I, I wanna provide some context to the forensic audit, uh, especially in light of some of the, the comments this evening. So, uh, I wanna begin by saying, uh, it's disappointing to see so many former elected officials focus on trying to protect or defend their, their reputation, rather than the facts before us. And the facts before us are very clear, and I've been very clear about them in the past, and I'll be clear about them again, uh, this evening. I didn't create these facts, they were created by previous elected officials. But the facts remain the facts. And that is that we do, in fact, have a year-to-year deficit to the tune of about $3 million, which has been reducing the fund balance quite substantially. Uh, and the previous administration, uh, was not, uh, very forthright about that year-to-year, uh, deficit. And I believe that we have to be forthright and honest with our residents and our citizens about the full and complete financial picture facing us. Uh, the purpose of the forensic audit, uh, is not primarily about the year-to-year deficit, although that's certainly a consideration. The purpose of the forensic audit is primarily because the previous mayoral administration spent money in ways it was never authorized to spend by the previous city council. And that is former Councilwoman, uh, Patrice Waterman's point, is former c- city Councilwoman Gloria Miller's point, is that money was spent in ways that was not legally authorized. And we have a full agenda this evening to try to both get the truth out about that, to the point of some of the speakers, but also to actually have the spending that did occur reflected in the budget. This is spending, to, to Councilwoman Miller's point, this is spending that has already happened. We're not authorizing new spending. This is spending that already happened. But we have an obligation to reflect that reality in the current budget. This is money that went out the door, and we're not just gonna stick our head in the sand and pretend it didn't happen. We're going to come and seek authority from city council to acknowledge and recognize the financial reality that has occurred in the middle of this financial year. Uh, it's very important that we, as the executive branch, the mayoral administration, not take action unilaterally without city council's sign-off. That's part of my longstanding commitment to collaborate with city council, and part of that is making sure that the, uh, budget for this fiscal year reflects spending that has already occurred, and both accommodate needed future spending. And that's what these agenda items are about, and it's also why we need a forensic audit. The forensic audit, uh, RFP went out, uh, some time ago. It was authorized at the very first meeting that this city council had on January 4th. Uh, the very first item that I proposed was this forensic audit, to authorize the forensic audit and put out an RFP soliciting proposals from accounting firms to conduct it. The deadline to respond to that RFP was last Monday, eight days ago, and we received nine proposals from accounting firms. These are accounting firms from all across the county. There's, or, all across the country, rather. There's one from, uh, Detroit, but there are lots from, uh, everywhere from the West Coast to the East Coast and everywhere in between. Uh, these are well-respected, generally, accounting firms, and it's very important that we collaboratively, between the executive branch and council, select a firm that we believe is going to dig into the truth about past spending without fear or favor. Uh, and that's why we wanted to immediately put these proposals from the accounting firms before city council. We got them all in last Monday, eight days ago. We had to have the city council agenda to the city clerk last Thursday to present to council, and we wanted to immediately share all nine proposals in their entirety with council and with the general public, which is why they're found online. Uh, and we have not yet had an opportunity to identify a recommendation, because we wanna do that in partnership with city council. Uh, and with that, uh, I'll allow the deputy mayor to add anything that he'd like to add to that, uh, process. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I will add is, um, I do believe the mayor said that we do have a, um, a, a review committee that is, that has been put together, which does include someone from council, and that, that meeting should be scheduled next week for us to get through this, and we are really looking forward to getting everything in front of you as quickly as possible. Um, I, I, I think that I would also like to just add that, you know, this is about day 45 of the new council, the new, um, executive administration, and we are doing everything in our power, not only to proverbially keep the trains running, but also to make the changes that we need to make in order to get the city moving in the direction that we all wanted to move.
Thank you. Council members that wish to have the floor, Councilman Nicholson.
Hi. Um, so I'm the chair of the Finance and Personnel Committee. We had our first meeting, got an update on this matter, um, in that, uh, the, the partnership between the administrative branch and the legislative is that, as that chair, I will be on, uh, that audit selection committee, so I'll be there to review all of these options and, um, be able to take that back to our subcommittee, and then a council at large of, of, of updates of what's going on, um, as related to the audit proceeding. I wanna make it very clear too, um, that in case it wasn't already, that the council's, uh, election period, when we're elected, we walk into a budget that's already running. We walk into a budget that was approved, and expenses, and, 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 and all of the revenues have already started to come in, and it's already been spent. Uh, so, what's on the line, and you look at some of these, these items, you're not only talking about large, large law, our, our, our law firm, you're talking about an, an event in which small businesses in Pontiac were engaged. And as a small business owner, if I was approached by the mayor and asked to do catering, or asked to provide linen service, or asked to sing, I, and, and I signed a contract, or I got a handshake, uh, and I, I sent that bill in and never got paid, I would feel very hard-pressed to do an event like that again, or to lend my services, or my expertise, to the city again. And they don't look at it as this mayor or that mayor, they look at it as the city of Pontiac. So, some of the decisions we have to make tonight is, is do we write these checks, um, and this will largely be discussion, but do we write these, these checks to Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, not just Giro Marco Law Firm, or other large vendors or contractors that had been engaged, uh, without council's approval? Um, so, there is, there is, there is that, that aspect. As we consider that, that, that moving forward, we also then, doesn't mean if we decide to write those checks, we will still consider what is, what is the city's ability to then recuperate those funds, or what is our obligation to legally pursue these matters? Um, those two things can be held and thought of separately. So I don't want anyone, uh, to ever feel like us writing that check to blank catering service means that the city is going to continue in that way, or the city is not going to fully inspect what our obligations or, or opportunities are at past, past writing that check.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford, and then Mayor Grimal.
Um, so first off, there have been people who have had RFPs or, or bills that are due for over a year for events, they have already performed their services. I'm not gonna put their names out, but I can name five of people who were told by people that they were gonna get paid in a timely fashion for catering, for playing music, for singing, for performing, and they have not been paid. And so at the end of the day, we are held accountable to that. That's the first thing. Number two, Mayor Grimal, thank you for your transparency, because you have to call a spade a spade, even if it makes people feel uncomfortable. Number three, uh, when we first got into office, um, the Honorable Patrice Waterman gave us a blueprint, a book, for us to go by, so that we understood what we were walking into. And so I think it's very important that we tell y'all the truth, even if it makes certain people feel uncomfortable, because the truth of the matter is, stuff was overspent. The truth of the matter is, a hundred, let me make sure I say it right, $182,000 was never authorized by the previous 10th Council. Is that not correct? Okay, I'll wait. And so if $182,000 was authorized by the previous council, that mean we got to pay them, do we not? Or we gonna get sued? So let's just, let's just pick bare, bare, bare minimum, that has to be paid. So at some point, all your bills, as my grandma always say, gonna come due. And these bills are due, whether we like it, whether it makes us feel right, they're due. That's it. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Well, that's, uh, very well said, uh, Councilwoman. Uh, and I, I do just wanna reiterate, the vast majority of this spending already occurred by the previous administration. The previous administration had already written the vast majority of these checks. Not quite all of them, but the vast majority of them. That money went out the door before January 4th, under the previous administration. We're simply amending the budget to try to make sure that this budget reflects expenditures that already occurred this fiscal year. Now there are some additional bills that, uh, we've been, uh, asked to pay by those who provided services to events put on by the previous administration in December or before, and that's what Councilman Nicholson's referring to and Councilwoman Rutherford. And the large majority of those bills are for Pontiac residents and Pontiac small businesses that provided services at the request of the previous administration and were not paid. And we believe that we should not stiff those people. We believe that we should, in fact, pay those folks for services that were rendered. But we, as the mayoral administration, don't wanna do that without city council approval. And so that's part of tonight's budget amendment as well, because we don't wanna do what the previous administration did and spend money without council approval. But we also don't wanna stiff people who in good faith provided services when asked to do so. And so that's why we're making this ask of council tonight to approve this, so that we can move forward and pay people for services that were rendered in good faith.
Other, Councilman Nicholson, uh, excuse me, Councilman Goodman?
I mean, just to add to, to, to all of that, I mean, Pontiac, as a city, is already looked at in a, in a separate light from our other neighbors in Oakland County. We all know that. And I think the last thing that we wanna do is also have the reputation for, hey, we have small businesses here, and even our city government doesn't pay them. Why would that ever incentivize, one, any Pontiac resident to Why would that ever incentivize, one, any Pontiac resident to ever do anything for the city government, or even want to be here? And secondly, how does that incentivize people to eventually come here and open up businesses if we aren't going to do good on contracts, essentially, that they provide a service for the city? I mean, the unfortunate part of doing this job, and I think I speak for everyone up here, is that there is a line between wanting to do what is the thing that will punish the person which has done it, and then also having to have the responsibility of doing right by the 61,000 residents who live in the city of Pontiac. And unfortunately, as everyone has pointed out, these are chickens that have to come home to roost. We don't have an option other than, hey, thank you for doing what you did, but because of who the person that did it, screw you. We aren't in a position, really, to do that. It's not the sound thing for us to do. That's all.
Thank you. Mayor Grimal, a question from me, for the administration. Do you want to give us a sense of what are the ideal targets for timeline, for when further items might come to this full council for the firm selection, for example?
We're hoping to have a recommendation, probably not in time this week, for next Tuesday's city council agenda, but I think certainly at the latest for the following city council agenda. So we anticipate that we'll have a recommendation, a joint recommendation of the council's representative and the executive branch, not for the February 22nd meeting, but for the March 1st council meeting. And we would ask for city council at that March 1st council meeting to approve the hiring of that recommended forensic audit firm, so that they can then get to work. And our hope is that they would complete their work within, you know, a couple of months, I think, at the outset, although some of that may depend on what firm is selected and what their capacities are and how quickly they can do that. And that's one of the reasons why we didn't want to wait to bring forward some of these budget items until after the forensic audit, for a couple of reasons. First of all, the forensic audit, yes, is likely to uncover more items. But we believe that we should be transparent, both with city council and with the public in a timely way, and not wait to disclose things until two or three months down the road after a forensic audit firm has completed its work. The other item is, we don't think that these small business vendors, these Pontiac residents who provided goods and services in good faith, should have to wait another two or three months in order to get paid after they've already been waiting a couple of months, and in some cases, longer than that. So that's why we wanted to move forward with these budget amendments as we discovered these problems, without waiting for the forensic audit work to be completed.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? So this is a discussion item. It was an update for this council and the public to know where things stand now. More developments and council action to come on that as well. Mayor Grimal, administration, do you want to share for the public and this body the implications to the financial health to our city if we were to not pay these obligations or not reconcile the budget offsets, if you will?
Well, yes, thank you. So a couple of things. One is, if we don't pay vendors who provided goods and services in good faith, we're likely to get sued by those vendors, so that obviously has its own financial ramifications. But we have to make sure that the budget reflects actual expenditures and actual revenues. And so as now good stewards of the city's money and finances, we need to make sure that the budget accurately reflects expenditures that have been made in the past, and we need to do that in a timely way. If we fail to do that, and we have spending that is going on but not reflected in the budget, we're likely to be out of compliance with GASB, our accounting standards, and other standards, both legal and moral, to make sure that we're being transparent with the public and being good stewards of the city's finances. And so, you know, yes, we're very concerned about the fact that this current year, the city expended $3 million more than it's taking in. Yes, we have a fund balance, a savings account, if you will, that can cover that. But that savings account does not last forever, and that's what a structural deficit means, is that the spending is not sustainable. Yes, we have a savings account, but spending $3 million more this year than we're taking in is not sustainable, and it's going to reduce that savings account, that fund balance, by that $3 million.
Thank you. Any final discussion on this item? Hearing nothing further, we're now at the second and final discussion. Letter B, Mill Street Reconstruction Project Administration, you have the floor.
Sadiki, take it away.
Sorry, this is not as interesting as the other discussions.
There's gold under Mill Street.
So, yeah, so for at least a couple of years now, we've had Mill Street on our capital improvement plan. It's been delayed for various reasons, including we've been waiting for some, we had requested congressional earmarks for the project, we were waiting on that decision and so on. So we finally got it out to bid, and the bids have come back. And so this week, I just wanted to present the bid results, bid tabs, to you. Next week, we'll have a letter of recommendation and resolution for award, basically, so that the project execution and the project construction does not get delayed. So this is a reconstruction of Mill Street in downtown from Water Street to Huron. It's a full reconstruct. There's also water main work. We're doing this in coordination with the WRC, Oakland County Water Resource Commission. The low bid, there were five bidders on the project, the low bid came in at $1,622,250. And then there was, sorry, yeah, so, and the road portion of that was $1,138,827. The water portion of it is about $483,000, for which we would have to have an agreement with, we have prepared an agreement with WRC to reimburse us that cost, and that will also, we'll bring that to you also next week to authorize that agreement as well. So the low bidder is Paymar Enterprises, and there's also an alternate on this project, the roller-compacted concrete pavement that we mentioned, or I mentioned a few weeks ago. We also included that as an alternate pavement on this project. It's about $27,000 more than the base bid. However, there are some benefits to doing that, which is that the time that it would take to complete the work will be quicker. So right now, we're proposing to do the work in two phases. Basically, it would impact one of the bays of the emergency, of the ambulances at the hospital. So we would close one bay in one phase, and then the other bay in the other phase, to ensure that ambulances always have access. So if we do the roller-compacted concrete, if we go with that option, then that will allow, that will minimize the amount of time that those ambulances are impacted. If you have any questions?
Questions from council? Councilwoman James?
So does the low bidder have the capacity to do both of those processes?
So the low bidder can definitely do the traditional concrete. The roller-compacted, they're going to bring in subcontractors. And this is the same subcontractor from the west side of the state that did Vanguard, and it's the only one in the state right now that does it. And, you know, honestly, from my perspective, it's, I think it's good to do another project like that, just to entice more contractors locally to adopt that technology as well, but, you know, there is that extra cost involved.
Is that going to be, though, their preference as to whether they use the roller-compacted, or is that something you would request? That the city of Pontiac would request them to use?
No, that's our request. So, yeah, we award either the base bid or the alternate.
So is this bid based on the alternate or the base?
Both are in here. So the base-
This is for the purposes of sharing for the council all that came in, and it isn't necessarily us doing the final pull of the trigger. We wanted to get the information while it was hot in your hands, so that way you could see them all while they're still working to get sort of the next stage, if that's fairly reflecting.
So the base bid is at $1,622,250.70, and the low bid for the alternate was $1,650,114.35. So both are in your package.
President Protem Carrington?
Thank you. I'm not, I don't necessarily agree with the lowest bidder concept. I definitely want to make sure that we get our money for the work that is done in the city. Secondly, you may not know this, so it's okay if you don't. Of these companies that put in bids, do you know in particular, do they hire minorities, or what's the percentage minorities that work with these companies?
Yeah, I don't know that. And that's something we can request from them before next week. We'll request that information.
All right, thank you.
Now, I will say, Paymar has done work in the city before. They've done a fairly good job. Great Lakes Contracting is our emergency repairs contractor as well. They've done work. Mark Anthony Contracting, they're the contractors that did Vanguard, and the other two have not worked in the city yet.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman?
So another question I have related to that is, do we have, do you have any sense, and again, it's fine if you don't, of how these companies are based on their labor practices, if any of their workers are possibly unionized, or anything involving that information? Because again, I don't fully agree with the lowest bidder concept if there is something that actually beneficial comes from the extra money.
Right. So this project is not federally funded. There's no federal funds involved. If there were federal funds, there would be a requirement of prevailing wage. The federal government has set wages for specific positions. On projects that do not have federal funds, that wage is not required. It's something that the city could adopt, but right now, the state doesn't require it.
Mayor Grimal?
Yes, it's a great question, Councilman Goodman, and we'll find out and provide that information, although it's true that they're not legally required to pay federal prevailing wage, also known as the Davis Bacon Act wage scale. That doesn't mean that council or this administration, the city, might not have a policy preference to ensure that they're paying their workers well and treating their workers well, or utilizing unionized workforces. So we'll make sure that we look into that and get that information to all council members. And similarly, we want to make sure that city contractors are utilizing, city residents especially, but also making sure that they have truly diverse workforces, and that they're treating all employees appropriately, fairly, and legally. And so we'll make sure to get that information to council members.
And I will say that maybe we need to have a further conversation when it comes to talk about prevailing wage and, you know, going forward.
Councilman Nicholson?
Thank you for that. It's certainly important to me. I could kind of care less about what is federal or not. I care about whether or not workers receive their adequate due, as well as our city receiving that adequate quality that I believe personally comes with that adequate due. So this is for street improvements, right? It's not, we're not replacing, this is for improvements as they look down the street. There's, it doesn't look like we're tearing the whole street out and redoing.
No, this is a reconstruction.
Full reconstruction. Okay, and this is a reconstruction, I just want to make sure everybody's very aware that this is Mill Street from Water just to Huron.
Just to Huron.
So that sticker shock, as we continue on with tonight's meeting and we start to talk about potholes, which I know is coming, $1.6 million to do Mill Street from Water to Huron. That's a short leg of street for one point, but that's what it costs, so I just want to put that out there.
And just to be clear, that includes water main work as well.
Sure, well, as most streets would.
The road work by itself is 1.1 million, yes.
Yeah, right.
Order in the audience. Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
That also includes repairing the sewer line, correct?
The storm sewers, yes. The sanitary sewers, the WRC said they didn't need any improvements, so.
Okay. Can we, like, ensure that that doesn't happen? Because what we don't want to happen is, is that we get it repaired and then a year from now.
No, that is not going to happen here.
I'm sorry?
That is not going to happen here. We're not going to rip up the road again in one year.
Okay, thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? Hearing no further discussion. Thank you, administration and council. We are now at the first ordinance. Is there a motion to approve an ordinance to amend Chapter 42, Community Development, Article 7, Rehabilitation Agreement?
I'm moved. Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford, so we now have a properly moved and seconded item before us. Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'd like Deputy Mayor Stevens to speak in detail about this item. Deputy Mayor Stevens worked very closely with building department officials and with the city attorneys to make these proposed amendments to the city's rehabilitation ordinance. The background here is pretty simple, which is that when properties are condemned in the city of Pontiac, folks are given a six-month period to rehab those properties. And there were a lot of loopholes and problems in the previous existing city ordinance that allowed people who entered into these rehab agreements to often fall short of their obligations or to play games and try to delay their obligations by pulling one permit to get a six-month extension, then pulling another permit to get another six-month extension. And so we believe that tightening up this ordinance is very important for our city's anti-blite efforts, to make sure that neighborhoods don't have to have unnecessary blight, and that when we condemn buildings, there's real enforceable teeth to that. And with that, I'll allow Deputy Mayor Stevens to take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as the mayor said, the concept is simple. The six-month period remains the same. There was an existing ordinance, we're making updates and changes to that ordinance. The previous ordinance was responsible for helping over 100 buildings get updated, and so that's wonderful, and we want to be able to help even more buildings get updated. And part of that is providing the extra teeth that these changes will provide to actually ensure that people are carrying through on what they've asked for. One of the biggest changes that we are suggesting is an elimination of the lien option. So one of the options, one of the requirements in the ordinance now, and the ordinance as proposed, is that there is a $15,000 bond that needs to be put up, so that whoever is rehabbing that property, if they don't carry through with their rehab within the six months, and they don't ask for a proper extension, the city then has the ability, and it has the funds, to tear the property down so that residents don't have to live with blight. A former loophole that existed was, if you were a city resident and you were rehabbing a different property other than the property that you lived in, you could ask not to put up the bond, but to have a lien put against the property. And enforcing liens and actually getting the money to be able to tear down the property from a lien is just difficult. So we are removing, we're asking that this ordinance removes that option and just sticks with the cash bond. As the mayor said, this also clears up some questions. When we had the batch 17 come in front of you, there were questions about properties. Could they come off of batch 17? Could they not? You know, what needed to be done? The updates to this ordinance specifically address some of those situations, so that we won't be at the last minute asking, should we do this, should we not do this? It's already included in here to say, hey, if the city has already expended funds, yes, you can enter into one of these agreements, but before you enter into the agreement, these are the steps that you need to take, and that wasn't codified previously.
Thank you. President Protem Carrington?
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. I actually had a chance to look at, you guys done a great job in this particular ordinance, but one question that concerns me is the section at 42-242, Termination of Rehabilitation Agreement. And it mentions, "Any extension of this rehabilitation agreement shall be at the sole discretion of the building official, and upon their finding that such extension is in the best interest of the city of Pontiac." So that's pretty vague. So for myself and the residents, could you explain what would be something considered the best interest of the city? Because that leaves a lot of room for the building official to have a lot of authority in determining these extensions.
Thank you, Councilman. That does appear to be vague. The idea, the idea behind that is very simple. We don't want to write the ordinance in such a way that anyone is guaranteed to get a six-month extension. You heard the mayor talk about the idea that you had individuals who were literally playing games to get extensions. Well, I'll pull one permit to show that I'm doing work, and then I'll, it'll take me six months- And then I'll, it'll take me six months to update a, a circuit breaker. And then I'll pull another permit to show that I'm doing work. And it'll take me six months to put on a new roof. And then I'll pull another, and you can see how that can drag on and on and on, and an individual will, will have a blighted property that is, that is in the community. So doing it this way, the building official or the, or the designee of the building official can actually say, you know, I can see that you've been doing work. You know, you've given me a logical explanation as to why this work wasn't done in six months. You've given me a logical path to believe that you can finish it in another six months, and I will, I will, you know, make that extension.
All right, thank you. No more, no further questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford.
I just want to say I really do like this ordinance because it does hold the people accountable in a more vital way than it has to get the things improved. So I do, I'm so glad that you guys were very detailed in the context of it. So I appreciate this, thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? This is the, the first reading, and so this will come before this body again. There can be further review, research. Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
Just one question, just in general, where would a resident get a bond for this kind of thing from?
That is a wonderful question, and we happen to have our building official here with us tonight who may actually know the answer to that.
Good evening, everyone. So when we talk about bonds, we're talking about a cash bond. So it's just a cash bond that's being held by the city. When it's rehabilitated, the cash bond gets released. Anything over $15,000, and I didn't, I apologize, I did not read this. I was not planning on being here tonight. But I did work with the deputy mayor in revising this. Anything over $15,000, we had talked about was a, was going to be some sort of a surety bond or a letter of credit. And I'm not sure if, we just said it was all cash. So yeah, so it would just be all cash. The surety bonds are so hard to, and they're, it's, it's, they're so hard to get back and be able to take the money and do something with them, just like the liens. It's very hard to, to get that lien money back. So that's why we, you know, we were trying to make it simple and, and straight across the board.
Anything further, Councilwoman?
Yeah, I'm still, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm new to this.
Okay, we've got an answer.
I, I think what the councilwoman is asking, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think what she's getting at, and I, and I'm left wondering the same thing that, that she is, i- is there a difference between a cash bond, a $15,000 cash bond, and a $15,000 cash deposit with the city? And if there is a difference, what is the difference?
So, thank, thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you, Director, for, for reminding me. We did take out the surety bond, and the, the answer is no, Mayor. There is not a difference between a cash bond and a cash deposit. So the city actually has the money to tear down the property, if it needs to tear down the property, and then the individual will receive that money back once the property gets a certificate of occupancy.
So what, you know, what's confusing me is when I think of a bond, I think of the criminal system where the person goes to a company who produces, you know, who, who gives them a bond and they pay a percentage of the amount of that bond. So when you say bond, I'm wondering, are there companies that offer residents a way to be able to put up a bond? Or is that a, is that a full amount of cash money? Because I think people listening need to, need to know. I don't, of just how it works. So what you're saying is the full amount, if that person, if it's going to cost $10,000 to tear down that house before he can get the, the, you know, the, the contract, he has to put up the amount of money that it would cost, that full amount of money that it would cost to tear that house down.
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
Councilman Nicholson.
Do we have any numbers on, I, I know people have walked away having a lien, because I know several residents who are in that situation where they've purchased property wanting to do a rehab agreement. There's liens on the property, tracking and sorting out those liens has been somewhat of a nightmare over the years. Do we have any information on people who have walked away from this $15,000? And people had paid that in lieu of getting a lien? Do we have many people that were walking, like, is this really going to solve that problem?
So currently, and just off the top of my head, because I don't have any information in front of me, I think there's six or seven properties with liens that have not been...
So six or seven with liens? How many that paid the $15,000 instead of getting a lien? Instead of opting for the lien?
So there's, so there's six or seven of the liens that are not in compliance. There are, I think, two properties where they've paid the cash money that are not in compliance currently.
Thanks.
Mayor Grimal.
Yeah, I, I do just want to clarify that my understanding of these revisions is that it would not simply require a $15,000 cash bond. It, or, or it would actually require a, a cash bond or a deposit in whatever amount it is estimated to cost to demolish the building. So the previous ordinance had a sort of minimum threshold to that of $15,000, which meant that no matter how small the structure, no matter how inexpensive it might be to demolish the structure, someone would be required to secure a bond of at least $15,000. This allows for that amount potentially to be less than $15,000 if it's estimated to cost less than $15,000 to demolish the structure. The whole reason and the only reason we want this security is to make sure that if the person does not make good on their pledge to rehabilitate the structure, that the city has the resources to move forward with demolition. And that's why I think this is a preferable system, because it bases the amount of that security deposit on the estimated cost of demolition based on square footage, rather than some arbitrary sum that may in fact be higher than cost of demolition. I also believe, although I'm not sure about this, does, I believe that this applies to structures other than owner-occupied homes, but that it's, there's a separate provision for owner-occupied homes that is a little more flexible to accommodate folks who are trying to rehab the home they actually live in.
So an owner-occupied home would not be on this list? Because an owner-occupied home would have a certificate of occupancy.
That's a good point. Someone's actually living there.
Any, Councilwoman James?
I just wanted to add that I think it's excellent as well with the Councilman Carrington's comments. It covers all the bases. It really is reasonable, and it's something that you can really carry out, carry through with. I like the fact that it has, you know, it, it allows some discretion with the building officer to be able to extend it, because there will be circumstances, you know, where it would need to be extended. I mean, we're in a, coming out of a pandemic all over the world, we're, we're seeing shortages of materials and supplies. So conceivably, there could be a reason why, very legitimately, the, the, the project would, would be delayed. So it's good to see that you thought even of that, to say, hey, yes, you know, you can get an extension, but it's going to be left at the discretion of somebody who really understands what can cause delays and what can't. You know, so I, I think it's just an excellent, excellent...
And this was one of the changes in the ordinance. The previous ordinance did not allow any extensions whatsoever.
Yeah.
So, and then just the, the average house in, in the city is about 1,000 square feet, so we're looking at about a $10,000 bond instead of $15,000. So it's, I mean, we're right, you know, right in that area.
I can't grant that, I'm sorry, but I do have to intervene to say that residents are reporting that the live streaming of this city council meeting is, is no longer live. So if somebody can notify the, the cable team that that's a problem.
I'm texting him now.
So I'm, I'm sorry, we can't recognize those that aren't in the body at this time, but this is not the time we'll be voting on it. So there is still a week's time where feedback, questions, strengthening can be further considered. I do want to emphasize for residents, don't let a property get condemned. That is, that is the biggest, almost death sentence to a property. We want to create this sort of hail mary option, but please take every, you know, every step possible and, and follow those communications, you know, respond if there's an inquiry or a citation or a violation, because I want that for no structure. I want every structure to be viable, safe, beautiful, but once this death spiral of a condemned property happens, it is extremely difficult to bring it back from the brink. And I'm grateful for more clarity provided to residents or future residents. I think that's a great value. I do want to identify that over the week to come, all right, as a point of procedure, it says the live stream's back on, so welcome back, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac. There is a, a point in terms of an additional 60-day period shall be allowed for properties located within historic district. I think that's important, and it came up in the subcommittee discussions, because the Historic District Commission, of which Councilwoman James had served on, there is sort of an additional lag or additional hurdle that's required for especially exterior improvements, because they have to meet those standards, and depending on the nature of the, the changes that they're doing, have to go before the Historic District Commission to get approval as well, which does that time, it's a, you know, adds another procedural hurdle. So we can consider if we want to modify that at all, but I do think it's important to create that different distinction, also because a lot of the historic district properties are much larger and much more complicated, because it's a, a much older, a more historic structure and, and mechanics and all that, that internal stuff. Anyone that wish to be acknowledged on this further? I'd like to entertain a motion to postpone for one week, to allow for our second reading to, to happen next week.
I'll make the motion to postpone.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford and seconded by President Protam Carrington to postpone this motion for one week's time. Hearing no discussion on that. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We'll see it again next week. Is there a motion to approve the council resolution authorize, or the, is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing Foxhole, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization in Pontiac as a recognized nonprofit organization in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. So that motion is now before us. I want to give the floor to Clerk Doyle to give us some context. This is sort of a procedural matter that originated from his office. Give us the scoop.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anytime a nonprofit requests a charitable gaming license from the state, they need a local governing body resolution. They contact the clerk's office. As a part of that process, we require the organization to submit their Articles of Incorporation, their IRS 501(c)(3) determination letter, and both of those documents are in your packet. Foxhole is a nonprofit in Pontiac. Their mission is through martial arts, they provide veterans an outlet to overcome various transitional challenges, including but not limited to PTSD and suicide prevention.
Thank you. I did see a representative from the organization in the audience earlier. They may have departed. This is the first that this council has considered such a matter. We have the motion before us. Is there any discussion? President Protam Carrington.
Well, is any, no one's here, right? So...
They have been.
Okay, I guess my, I just wanted to know, since I was reading the nonprofit status, so currently, they're working with veterans? And how long after this been happening? Since, it's really, no one's here to really, really talk to us.
I do know that I had a very brief conversation with the, Mr. De La O, who is the individual listed on the application. My understanding that it is a relatively newer organization, that he is the post-president for the VFW post on Cesar Chavez in Pontiac. And so with the VFW and AMVETS, it's a, it's an organization that started with their members that a lot of them are, a lot of veterans have succumbed to suicide. And so what he shared with me is that this organization has sprung out in part of trying to intervene with more healthy, proactive, and engaging efforts with veterans to prevent suicide. That's what he had shared with me. And, but it, it is a newer organization. I can't speak to...
Point of information, there is an exemption date listed, that they were offered their exemption as a 501(c)(3) at June 26 of 2020, would have been their date of incorporation.
Very good. It's possible that they might have been doing some work more informally before that as well. President Protam.
That actually was my question. I understood the, the nonprofit date. I just wanted to see how long they've been doing the work that they say the nonprofit is doing.
Any further discussion? Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Clerk, the gaming license, charitable gaming licenses, we were talking about bingo, poker, those sorts of activities, correct?
It is correct.
Any further discussion? Councilman Goodman.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't want to completely say no to the opportunity, because I think this, I just want to know more. I want to have more information about this, and again, doesn't say the person is here anymore. So I'd like to move that we postpone it or table it, whichever would be better, to possibly give them a chance to come back next week to explain this.
So a motion to postpone for one week?
Yes.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Support.
Any discussion on the motion to postpone?
None.
Hearing no discussion. Roll call on the motion to postpone this motion for one week.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Or, I mean, Rutherford.
Abstain.
Are you abstaining because you...
I, I don't understand what's, why we're waiting, because it's not like they're asking for money. They're not asking for us to do anything in spectacular. So I don't, I can't vote on something that I don't particularly agree with. Several of us, we either work at a nonprofit or have our own nonprofit.
Because it's a roll call, we can't do discussion, but per our council rules, the abstain is if there's a direct conflict.
Oh, no, it's not, so...
So you'll need to vote yes or no?
No.
Okay.
Five yeas, one nay.
That motion carries. It's a postpone for one week, and I'll work to offer them the opportunity to do a special presentation more towards the meeting, so they can, they can plan to know to be here at a certain time. All right, with that, we're now at, is there a motion to approve the council resolution recognizing Pontiac historian Esmo Woods?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. That motion is before us. Many in the community know this really larger-than-life figure. He is still with us, but truly a pillar of the community. Mr. Esmo Woods has lived, you probably even know his house, even if you don't know him, in the beautiful historic home at the corner of Orchard Lake and Ottawa Drive. He's lived there for over 50 years. He, in 1951, graduated from Pontiac High School. He was the first African-American student ever elected class president by a majority-white student body at that, and he was the second African-American ever elected to the Michigan All-Star Basketball Team. And that was that same year in 1951. Went on to achieve an amazing educational career, including when he was getting his master's degree at Columbia. He did his thesis interviewing Dr. W. E. B. Dubois. And he's come back to Pontiac, had a long career with community relations at Pontiac General Hospital, so he was a city employee and their grant writer. But he also has written nine books, one of which is sort of The Modern History of Pontiac, Michigan, published in 1991. A really dynamic human being. He is 88 currently, will be turning 89 in May. And with this resolution, it would be identifying him as a Pontiac citizen of great distinction. And because of Black History Month and the work that he has done, not only has he helped preserve and promote Pontiac's black history, he himself is a, a living embodiment of that. So since there's a motion before us, others that wish to have the floor? Mayor Grimal.
Well, I, I would be remiss if I didn't just reflect on the, the fact that Mr. Woods is, is truly an amazing, amazing person, and I've been privileged to call him a friend for well over 10 years now. I own the book that President McGinnis referenced, and Mr. Woods is, is truly an... And Mr. Woods is truly an intellectual and historian of national stature. We're very fortunate to have his skills and abilities here in Pontiac, illuminating our local history. So he's just a truly phenomenal human being, and very worthy of this resolution of tribute.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? Hearing no further discussion. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, and congratulations to Mr. Esma Woods and the Woods family. A round of applause for him being a citizen of great distinction. Is there a motion to approve the council resolution advocating for broader recognition of trailblazer Elizabeth Dennison Ford?
Move by Carrington, or support by Carrington?
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington. We have the motion before us. And I invited Library Board trustee Rosie Lance Richardson here to be able to offer a few reflections on this amazing trailblazer's life. She's done a great deal of research on Elizabeth Dennison Ford. So, Rosie Lance Richardson, you have the floor for a few moments. Tell us what we're dealing with.
Good evening, council, mayor, citizens. I'm glad to be before you. I'm excited, and I want to thank each one of you for the job that you're doing. I'm excited about being able to come back to the board again. And I am now excited, and I want to thank you for the reelection to the library board. And I'm chairperson again. So, with that being said, three things I want you to keep in mind about Elizabeth Dennison Ford. Think about Brush Street in Detroit, think about Woodward Avenue, and think about Oak Hill Cemetery. And when we talk about these things, we talk about Elizabeth Dennison Ford, who initially was the first African-American, not only the first African-American woman in the state of Michigan to own land, but in the city of Pontiac, also the county seat. She was enslaved, and she was born in Macomb County. And although it says that she was illiterate, it's hard to believe that she was able to buy stocks and bonds, and actually be able to purchase land, work for the siblings, go to France, be in Philadelphia, buy property in Detroit, and then again, sell the property in Pontiac. Almost 50 acres of land that she owned. So a lot of us probably have a memory of Brush Street. If you go to Detroit, you'll know that the attorney, Brush, handled her case with her brother and her after they came back from, well, before they went to Canada, when they weren't allowed to be freed after they were enslaved. And that judge that unfortunately said that was Judge Woodward, which is Woodward Avenue. But after she went, she and her brother went to Canada and came back, they were able to get their freedom, and their family's freedom. And her brother, Solomon, I'm sorry, she was a maid for Solomon Sibley in Pontiac. Okay? And in addition to that, she let her brother have leased some of that land in Pontiac. And later on, she came back and she sold that land. She sold, after investing in stocks and buildings and so forth, she purchased 48.5 acres of land in Pontiac. And as I said, some of that land was sold to Stephen Mack, which was the founder of the Pontiac Company. So it's very important that we think about how important it was during the time that she sold the property in 1837, that she allowed us to have a lot of our loved ones to be buried in that, because she sold that property back, and it was utilized for that point. So I would ask you, as you consider voting on this, I'm a part of the Oakland County Pioneer Society Board. Also, I'm one of the Oakland County Historical Commissioners. And we're looking at putting some markers up, and doing some things around the Oakland County that represent her. So I would ask you, as you think about this, think about how important her life was, and how important she was. And she was also inducted into the Women's Hall of Fame in Michigan in 2017 in September. So I would ask you to think about your thoughts in respect to making this resolution very permanent, and considering how important it is to us, not only as the county seat, but the city, as well as all of us in general. So I ask you to consider that. And I've done several presentations and PowerPoints on her. So there's a lot of history about her and her family. So like I said, when you think about Brush Street, and you think about Woodward, think about the judge. Unfortunately, you know, he didn't have much say under the Michigan territorial law to actually free her and her siblings at that time. So when you think about that, and you think about some of the things that go along with that, I ask you to consider that, and know that there's a lot more history that goes along with that. And hopefully, you'll take an opportunity to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Discussion from council. Want to emphasize that Oakland County has taken some recent initiatives to better celebrate and recognize her, not only in Pontiac, but throughout the county. And so this is going to lend some voice and support from the city of Pontiac, for them to be more proactive, and for us to think of creative ways. But right here in Pontiac, Michigan, was not only in 1825, before Michigan was even a state, that land was purchased, the first black woman in all of Michigan. That transaction was here in Pontiac, land in Pontiac. And so she is the first African-American purchaser of land in all of Oakland County. So it's got not only statewide significance, but also Oakland County-wide significance. And it's worth celebrating, and thinking creatively ways that we can share and celebrate that with our residents for generations to come. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Councilwoman James?
I just want to say, I like how this is titled, "Advocating for Broader Recognition of Trailblazer Elizabeth Dennison Ford." And that's what we really do need to broaden that, as we look at how we can start really leveraging the history, the rich history of Pontiac. This is amazing that this black woman owned the property that, you know, our historic cemetery is built on. And yet, we have nothing in our city right now that speaks to that history. I do know that a couple of years ago, there was a presentation made to the Pontiac City Library, suggesting that the library be renamed the Elizabeth Dennison Ford Library. So I still, I think there are these opportunities for us to incorporate this rich history, and really make it a living part of the history within our city. So I just, I think it's a great, the way that it is worded, this is really what we need to do. We need to look for ways that we can really recognize this woman's history.
Thank you. I do want to name-check that in the early 1990s, the state of Michigan did do a marker that's in the cemetery currently. Then Secretary of State Richard Austin came for the ceremony. But the late Cora Bradshaw, as well as when we spoke about historian Esma Woods, Professor Jeff Breger, they were in Virginia Block. So we've, Ms. Bradshaw and Ms. Block have since passed away, but they were very proactive in celebrating her story, and that led to that state marker in 1992. But there now is sort of renewed effort, including people in this room, including Chairwoman Richardson, who are a part of sort of this new momentum, to do it in a more broadly-recognized way, to your point.
Absolutely. Can I just say this also, in terms of not renaming University Drive, but adding, just like on Phil Do, it says above that, it says Pinklin Thomas Drive. It's to change that, since that's right near the cemetery, to Elizabeth Dennison Ford on top of university. So that would be something that they're working on right now through the county. So, we'll bring back forth. And that doesn't recall, like Cesar Chavez has, going through the whole process. But that's something else to be a caveat that will be added to that.
Very good. Any further discussion? Speakers list having been exhausted. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve, the resolution to approve the mayor to sign the Michigan Department of Transportation Funding Agreement, Contract Number 21-5506, for construction of the University and Kennett Bridges Capital Preventive Maintenance Project?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, I retract that. I think we made a motion last week. It was postponed to this week for our second reading.
That's correct.
So we done that. So sorry about that.
No worries.
So the motion's before us again. Hooray. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. We did dive into it last week. Does the administration have any final updates they want to elaborate on further?
I don't think so, but certainly if council members have questions, we are more than willing to answer them.
I would just like to clarify, the M.D. did say that the same agreement is correct. The numbers in there are estimated numbers, and so the ratio of funding will still hold, even with the new bids.
Thank you for following up on that. So that gives us peace of mind that we don't have to come back and redo anything. And for the community's benefit, the state is paying for the very overwhelming bulk of it. It's a very small fraction.
95%.
95%. I like those odds. So 5% is the city's financial contribution to those preventive maintenance projects. And as the very vast, or at least more on-the-horizon, infrastructure funds may allow from various initiatives that the state of Michigan are doing, or the federal government, we say Pontiac, Michigan is warmly welcoming, especially those that have a 95% externally-funded ratio. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on that motion.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
And then, sir, if you could, this is a point of personal privilege. Could you just share, for those that might live near those, what timeframe we're talking about, when this might work, work is targeted to be done?
Right. So this work is going to start after the school's closed, because these are both near schools. So this will start around the end of June. It will be budgeted in the next fiscal year.
Very good. Thank you. We are now at items number six, seven, eight, and nine. Is there a motion to combine those four items, and do a motion to approve those four resolutions? Or, would you like to take them case by case? You're the council.
I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
Okay. So it's moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, and seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington, that we combine these six, seven, eight, nine items as one motion to proceed. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Roll call on that combination. Oh, excuse me. Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, let's do it. Roll call on the Combination Act.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
I'm sorry.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
All right. So that's now before us, sort of as a comprehensive item. Is there a motion to approve those resolutions?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
Bless you. Is there a second?
Support Carrington.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by President Pro Tem Carrington. So we now have a motion before us on these four items. For the sake of clarity, how about administration handle them in the corresponding order and separately as they are?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to allow Deputy Mayor Stevens to get into the details. I'll just note that Resolution 7, 8, and 9 involve, as we discussed fairly extensively earlier, efforts to make sure that the budget reflects overspending, most of which already occurred and went out the door. In some cases, services that were provided but not paid for under the previous administration. And we want to make sure that we're accurately reflecting all of that in the budget. The provisions regarding attorney fees simply increase the budget, not just to accommodate past expenses incurred and spent, but also to allow us to continue to pay for legal services moving forward through the rest of this fiscal year as well, so we don't have to come back for additional ability to do that. Number six, however, is a fundamentally different item, in that it is not due to excessive spending under the previous administration, but perhaps, if anything, underspending, in that there have been a number of court rulings that have shown that the city is in fact obligated to pay for sick and vacation time upon police and fire folks retiring and reaching retirement age. We obviously don't currently have any active police or fire employees working for the city currently, but we do have a number of former police and fire employees, who, some of whom have not yet reached retirement age. And when they reach retirement age, the city is obligated to pay out the sick and vacation time that they accrued during their time as active employees here at the city. And previously, the city apparently contested that. The city repeatedly lost its efforts to contest that. There's really no legal question that police and fire retirees are entitled to this pay. And we want to make sure that we're budgeting accordingly, so that the city is in fact paying those who literally risk their lives serving the city, the sick and vacation pay that they're entitled upon reaching retirement age. And that's what item number six is designed to do. And with that, I'm sorry, I probably said quite a bit, Deputy Mayor, for saying I'm going to allow you to get into the details. But I did just want to clarify that item six is a little bit different from the other items.
The mayor said everything that needs to be said on item six, with the exception of the fact that this is a budget amendment for this year, but we do want to bring it to your attention that we will be budgeting this for the next couple of years, just to make sure that we do have adequate funds each year to deal with the, as people age into being able to claim that, those funds.
And this is worth noting, this is really just authorizing the clerk to publish the notice, so we can start the process rolling. Clerk Doyle, do you want to elaborate any further? So we're not voting tonight on yea or nay for, are we going to amend the budget? It's really just sort of getting that going. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Thank you, Mr. President. That is correct. The charter requires, before a budget amendment is made, that I have to post, a notice has to be posted in the newspaper. And it has to be posted at least one week before council takes action. So actually, these items won't come back before the council until two weeks from today for you to officially take action. Thank you.
Understood. Any discussion before we vote on the, well, yeah, let's go back to the meat of it. Is there anything further that the administration would like to? Any questions? How about this, on that settlement payments for sick time payouts? Anyone want to clarify that further? All right, with that, the administration would like to elaborate, that item was Resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2021-22, to allocate a total of $100,000 for that account for settlement payments for sick time payouts. So that's one of the four that we're talking about. Moving on to the next, we're now looking at Resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of a proposed budget amendment to transfer $72,000 from the general fund, balanced GL account, to the general fund account for city events. Would the administration like to elaborate for the council and community, what gives with the $72,000 specifically?
Well, this is in regard to city events. And in the current fiscal year budget that was approved by the previous city council, the previous city council budgeted $30,000 for city events. That included a budget for the previous mayor's State of the City address, which was given back in July, I believe, roughly. The previous administration incurred a total of $102,000 for city event expenses, including $46,000 to do what she termed an additional State of the City address in December, which I don't think had ever been done before by any mayor. And certainly, other mayors had not done two State of the City addresses in the same year. So $46,000 of that expense was associated with her, quote, "State of the City address", end quote, in December. $20,000 of that was for renting out the facility at M1 Concourse. In addition, there were expenses for a variety of other events, including a concert just a few days before the primary election-- a few days before the primary election in very late July or very early August, that cost a substantial amount of money and at which the previous mayor was a featured speaker. And there were a number of other miscellaneous expenses, all of which have been detailed in information provided to city council and which should be available online as well if the public's interested in looking at it. Deputy Mayor, did I miss anything?
No, you did not miss anything. In the memo that was sent to you, there were one, two, three, four separate events totaling $55,821.26, and then the mayor already stated that the State of the City, the winter December State of the City expenses were approximately $45,437.63. And so those amounts add up to the $72,000 that we're asking to put the budget back into balance.
On the city events portion, Councilwoman Rutherford?
So the eight twenty two thousand twenty-one, that's John Witz Entertainment Management, Event Management, correct? JTW?
That's right.
And that was due, that was through, that was before we did our, what is the word?
Dream Cruise?
Yes. That was not Dream Cruise. That was actually used as an event for voting or for people to come to a concert before we had our primary, correct?
I believe John Witz was involved in a few different events. I think there was one around Dream Cruise or around the drag racing nights, but I think he was also involved in the substantial expense that was allocated for this concert right before the primary on what was formerly known as Lot Night.
So I just want to make sure I got this right. This was an event for the primary that is being billed towards us? Or I'm just trying to understand this.
I don't think it was officially billed as an event that was election-related. However, I'll note that the timing was immediately before the primary election, and the speaker spoke about the mayor being up for reelection at the event, among other things. And so there is, I think, a very important question to be had about whether city funds were misused and abused for election purposes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to get clear to. Thank you.
Councilman Goodman, then Councilman Nicholson?
So just to put some things out there in plain fact, just based off the information that we have. So re-clarify for me, what is the amount that the 10th council allocated for the mayor's State of the City address, the original one?
The allocation in total for city events was $30,000. I'm not sure offhand if that was broken down by event or not. It may be that the previous city council allocated that entire $30,000 specifically for the State of the City address itself, and ultimately, a total, this, again, this is just through the end of December. Not, we haven't, we haven't spent any money on any city events this calendar year, but the former mayor herself spent a total of $102,000 in the course of six months, when the total budget for 12 months was only $30,000.
So what I also want to bring into that, just the, again, I think everyone here knows how basic math and budgeting works. So if the 10th council had allocated $30,000 for the entirety of a year, explain to me why in good fiduciary mindset, that why the previous administration would spend $23,000 on the rental of a singular facility for one night for a singular event in which not many people attended? So I want to have an understanding, which I won't get because someone's not here anymore, of the mindset of spending almost an entirety of the city's budget for city events on a singular event, not including the musical festival that you talked about, that costs almost $21,000, Power Week, which costs almost $19,000. I don't understand the mindset that someone can have when you see a number that is $30,000 and then decide, you know what, let me go over that dramatically, because I don't think anyone in this room who has ever had to pay bills and run a checking account has ever had that mindset before.
Well, they might, but they'd be bankrupt. Councilman Nicholson, then Councilwoman Rutherford?
When I look through the expense report, there's some things that are really clear about what they are. I'm not going to name names of particular providers. What does personal services mean? Do we know? Is that a stylist? Is that a? There's gift bags, there's key, you know, the making of the key to the city, there's a DJ, but then there's this sort of personal services.
It's a little unclear to me, and Deputy Mayor Stevens, do you have any insight into this, or perhaps Mr. Carrington can shed some light on to it, but I defer to you, Deputy Mayor, if you have some insights into the specifics.
No.
I know it was difficult for us to ascertain some of these.
Yeah, it was actually very difficult to ascertain these. I did not pull the specific invoices that go along with that. Mr. Carrington, do you happen to have those invoices and know what they are?
Don't come all the way up to the podium if you're just going to say no.
I don't have the invoices, but when we refer to personnel, personal services, we're talking about an individual who's working and getting compensated for their.
Personnel, not personal.
Personal, personal, a personal services contract. So which one were you referring to, Councilman?
Yeah, under services on the State of the City expense report, there's an item for $5,000 marked personal services.
Yeah.
Is there elaboration on what that means?
That, and I don't, again, I don't have that particular invoice, but just going off memory, it was a personal services contract for an individual who was working in terms of the planning and organizing of the State of the City event.
Okay.
Okay. So the Andrew Johnson is a singer, right? Do you see the item on, is the seven two, two thousand twenty-one? She's a singer. That was an elected event. That was an event for people to actually go, so why are we paying for that part? Because that was actually billed as a voting event. It was a voting engagement event. It was a gospel series. So why are we paying for that?
I believe that the city already paid for that, so I don't believe that those expenditures have yet to be made. So the question shouldn't be why are we paying for it, but why did the city pay for it? And I don't have a good answer to that, because the city should have never paid for it.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to know, because I was there, and I just didn't understand. Okay. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman?
So another question that I have, so, and this is not to come off negatively, who compiled the information that we have in front of you? Like, I guess, to the amount of detail that these are printed out with, was this you filling in what little information you had and giving us an idea of what the expenditure was?
So this was myself working with the finance department to say, hey, where did we spend money that was not approved? Where did we spend money that brought us over our lines and our limits? And so we went through, and that's what I said, some of the invoices, I actually pulled, I'm not an auditor, but some of the invoices I pulled and looked at, some of the invoices was just like, okay, that's one more invoice on top of this in this category, and now we have these numbers.
So the only thing that I want to bring up is just, and again, I think I speak for everyone up here, when all of us ran for office and we had to turn in campaign finance reports, there was a lot more detail required than I'm assuming that the administration was given. Is that, is that a correct statement?
On these?
You're saying, you're saying the previous administration, at the time this, these expenses were incurred or paid?
So let me clarify, put it a little closer. Based on the information that was provided, found, guesswork from, that was left by the previous administration, that you have come into to then compile what we have before us, and the information about, you know, swag item, keys to the city, was that information readily available and in a decent amount?
Like waiting for you in a, hey, this is.
In a box that may or may not be in a uniform truck.
No, sir, no.
So, so the issue that I have with that is the fact that, again, for almost everyone on this side of the audience, when we have to complete campaign finance reports, there is a large more amount of detail that is required for us to fill out things with the county. So the fact that, again, the previous administration is able to just make expenditures and kind of give high school fundraiser level responses to what's being spent, this is a problem. And again, this just highlights the reason of why we need forensics on, and why we need to look at these expenditures, because again, I am worried that if, you know, most of our records and line items say, oh, swag items, cool, what is that? You know, when we see professional services, yes, we can have an idea of what that means, but like, from a governmental standpoint, from the perspective of someone who gets paid thousands, over $100,000 a year, to then compile this, which is what you have been left with, to me, that is a problem, and that is a glaring problem.
Agreed.
Councilwoman Rutherford, I've already recognized you twice, and I'm only allowed to do up to two times. Who would like to speak for a first time? And remember, this is actually pretty lax, because this is really one motion, but we're going, we're sort of on the events. Does anyone else want to speak on the events for a first time? Carrington?
Just a quick question. Just a quick question. You guys said you did get invoices, so the invoices actually explain some of the services that that particular vendor was offering to the city, all right?
We can go back and pull more invoices, specific invoices.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be recognized? Councilman Nicholson for a second and final time.
So I noticed also at the State of the City, there's a video. Do we have this video? I mean, these are, this is, a lot of this stuff is still property, right? I mean, it seems like we should be able to, if we were paying for a video, we should be able to at least receive these things to use for further.
I believe it is in the city's possession. We were actually just talking about this video the other day. I have not personally watched it, but it does exist. We're happy to share it with anyone who's interested in seeing it. I would not characterize it as a prudent use of city financial resources to pay somebody to produce the video, but it was done by the previous administration.
The, the process by which someone becomes a vendor, was there an approved vendor process or a contracting process? I mean, I see a lot of, you know, familiar names and companies, but I'm wondering, you know, for some of these things, is there a bid process for a certain amount, a dollar amount, or is it, is there a process or a form at least that you fill out to become a vendor?
Yeah, so generally speaking, items up under $10,000 are treated in a different manner, or, you know, items above $10,000 generally would require a bid or some type of estimate and the like, you know, it's a more formal process. So many of these expenses were below that threshold. We, again, generally, we're required to follow the purchasing policy in terms of the selection of vendors and how those contracts are let out with, with each individual vendor.
But to underscore your point, Councilman, although city ordinance allows the executive branch to contract for goods or services in amounts less than $10,000 without an RFP process or without going before council, our administration has sought to come to council and be transparent about expenditures, even when they're less than that amount. But, but more importantly, some of these items that we're talking about were in excess of $10,000, and the previous administration violated city ordinance by not going through an RFP process and by not coming before council. In fact, in a couple of instances, the previous administration not only didn't come before council to seek approval of expenditures, but the previous council actually passed resolutions prohibiting those expenditures, and the previous administration spent the money anyway.
Reminds me of this process where we're tightening up with this ordinance, right? Where we say, we pull, we pull a contract to replace a power, you know, power panel, and then we pull a contract to do the roof, and, you know, all these little things add up to $72,000, you know, where we, even when we give that, you know, the full budget is what was the biggest picture for some of these events. And, you know, that $10,000, you know, process is great, but to me, I think there should also be some thought, too, when there, when each one of these items, that may be a budget in total, which I appreciate that transparency, I'm sure we'll see things like that regarding events like this in the future. Thank you.
Councilwoman James?
Yes, I have a question on, on Resolution eight. If you could help me to understand.
We aren't there just yet.
You're doing, dealing with each one?
Kind of subdividing it, yep.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll call you first, first. So with Grace Rutherford, then Goodman, for quick final items on that, city events.
You signed, you signed off on this?
On these, on the State of the City?
You signed off on this? It's, I, hold on. Did you sign off on this?
Ultimately, my authorities needed to cut, cut any of these checks. I didn't, I, and I don't want to get into details of private conversations, but myself, along with other people in the administration, expressed the fact that we did not believe that these expenses were allowable under the city's, a number of the city's policies.
I'm going to ask it another way. For the $55,821.26, my question is very simple. Did you sign off on this?
Well, we had, we had, we had two, we got two different items here. So, so, so one is, one is talking about the $55,000 is the events that were done, done leading up to the State of the City. And so at the time, the city had $30,000, the administration had $30,000 that could be spent. So for, for all of these items, they go through the finance department. Part of, part of my responsibility is authorizing those expenditures. But when we, and specifically talking about the State of the City, did I individually review in detail and authorize and sign off on those? That, that would not be, be an accurate statement. You know, we process a number of things. We have a process in place. We review them. I'm not, you know, with anything, I'm not intimately familiar with everything. We have department heads that, that provide some closer scrutiny of when these expenses are incurred, but I'm not at all trying to absolve myself of the responsibility that I have, had then and I have now. So, you know, in answering your question, the ultimate responsibility certainly, certainly lies with me, but from a process standpoint, I did, many of these events I did not attend, was not, you know, completely aware of all the, the details surrounding each of the events and the expenses that were incurred.
Mayor Grimes, I'd like to elaborate on your question as well, Councilwoman.
I think it's important that we be straight and direct with the public, and the fact is, Mr. Carrington did, in fact, sign off on a number of these expenses. And I don't want misinformation to be given at a public meeting without it being corrected, which is why I feel obliged to chime in. The truth of the matter is that Mr. Carrington did, in fact, sign off on a number of these items. What he's driving at is that the previous administration, in many cases, ordered him to and directed him to, but he did, in fact, sign off on these items.
And I, and as I, I want to be clear, I'm responsible for signing, ultimately signing off on all of those. I don't want to leave any, any misconception.
Order please in the chamber, so that way those who are recognized with the floor. Anything further, Mr. Carrington? With that, Councilman Goodman?
So one last question, and this is just me splitting hairs. So looking at the State of the City expense report, there are a couple blank spaces where there would typically be a dollar amount, specifically something about entertainment, where it says Markley Master of Ceremonies, and the plastic bag slash sanitizer face mask swag bag. Is the amount missing because we don't know the amount? Were they paid by someone else, or were the services rendered for free?
I don't, so I'm looking at the plastic bag sanitizer face mask swag bag item, and then the, the blank. I will have to get back to you on that specific. I believe that that is actually a place saver from when we were putting the list together.
Okay.
But I will, I will get back to you with a specific.
And then also check into the first one, the, the master of ceremonies, if there, if the service was rendered for free, or if there is an amount.
Yes.
I, I happen to have more information about that, that perfect imprint, that is, that is what that item is above, that is the vendor for those items.
It's like a sub-division.
Yeah, I, that was an invoice that someone asked me about getting paid, so, yeah.
All right. Any further discussion on the city events portion? Hearing nothing further, we're now at number eight, which is the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year, you know it, to transfer $308,000 from general fund balance account to the following. account to the following attorney fees accounts. Legal services, um, there's, so there's various different account numbers, but one for twenty-five thousand dollars, um, legal services, another legal services, specifically Giammarco Mullins, one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Legal services prosecutions, Giammarco Mullins, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Legal services Michigan tax tribunal, Giammarco Mullins, forty-five thousand dollars. And legal services code enforcement, Giammarco Mullins, eight thousand dollars. Councilwoman Ja- oh, actually, I'll give the Florida administration for some rationale, or what we know, and then, uh, Councilwoman James for the first question.
So, as, as you know, council, the city of Pontiac no longer has an in-house legal department. All of our legal work is outsourced. Giammarco Mullins and, um, Clark is our, is the firm that we use, is our primary firm, and what you are looking at here, and, and, um, loo- looking at all of the, um, sub, subcategories, is how we divide up the, the type of, of legal work that is done throughout the city. What, what we are asking for is, we've saying, we are saying, the city has already overspent that budget item, and so we're not just asking for enough money to bring us even, because we still have six months of time left, we're asking for enough money to bring us even, and projected out to have money so that we finish out the, the end of the fiscal year with a balanced budget, so that we don't have to keep coming back in front of you for this.
Thank you, Mayor Grimald.
Well, and, and just to put a, a finer point on that, uh, while Giammarco, uh, has historically, in recent years at least, uh, been used as the primary law firm for the city, uh, the city does utilize other law firms as well, and I don't believe there's anything in this budget amendment that says that this funding, this set aside budget amount has to be spent for Giammarco, it's to be spent for legal services, but that could be a number of other firms as well.
That is correct. It just happens to be that they are, um, because they are our primary firm, they're the ones whose name you see most frequently.
Thank you. Councilwoman James, you have the floor?
Yeah, I, I'm kind of confused with the three, uh, sets of, uh, GL accounts. Uh, the first one, uh, I was under the impression that is the budgeted amount for the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two calendar, or fiscal year, and the second one, uh, what went over, you know, that those costs went over in the amount of what's listed in the second columns. And then I'm not sure what's, what's going on with the third, so. I heard Tim's comments, but I'm, I really don't understand what I'm looking at here.
So, when you say second column, I only have one column of numbers.
Well, when I say second, I mean, you've got GL account, it's the same categories, but you've got three sets of figures, of numbers. Okay, the first one, the under amendment?
Yes.
Yeah, you've got three different sets of numbers. So I'm, I'm assuming that the first is what was in the fiscal budget for twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two?
Uh, want to clarify?
And the second was, the second set of budgeted numbers were what we went over? Is that what, this is saying?
No, ma'am.
Because legal services, you've got legal services prosecutions at one hundred and twenty thousand, and then in the second set, it says two hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct. So what you're looking at in the first set is the budget. So in order to appropriately budget for the projected cost of legal services for the remainder of the fiscal year, we are requesting a budget amendment to the following accounts in the amounts, um, listed. So you're adding, um...
The first set is what's being proposed to be added.
Added.
Yeah, but, but I, I can understand the councilwoman's confusion, because it, it is, it is a, a little odd how, how the resolution is written and framed. The first group of numbers is identical to the third group of numbers, and so my reading of the resolution is that there's some redundancy here.
Yes.
The first grouping of numbers, it says, is what we're asking the budget to be amended to.
The first group is, is what's going to be amended to?
That's right, as is the third group. So the, the first and the third group is the same, is, is my reading here. You're talking about the twenty-five thousand, one hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and twenty thousand, forty-five thousand, and eight thousand. Those numbers are identical in both the first grouping and the third grouping, because the resolution states that we're seeking to amend the budget to that, and then restates at the end that we're seeking to amend the budget to that. So those are what we're asking and seeking for the budget to be amended to. The middle grouping, the second grouping, is what had previously been, uh, budgeted by the previous council, and so in, uh, some instances, we're asking for those, not all instances, but in some instances, we're asking for those amounts to be increased based on, uh, excessive spending by the previous administration.
Okay. So if you will look at that, legal services, GMH, legal services prosecutions, legal services Michigan tax tribunal, legal services code enforcement, are all categories where we are asking to have the budget increased.
Yeah, and, and the reason why, and I, I think it's confusing as well, councilwoman, as I, as I tried to, to say, so I, I can understand why it's, uh, a little confusing. Because, the, the reason is that the two pages in front of you that are in the board packet is a combined memo and resolution. So the first part of it is a memo that simply says what we're trying to amend the budget to. Then the resolution begins and says what the previous city council last calendar year budgeted, and then that resolution continues to say what we, in the form of the resolution, are seeking to amend the budget to. So the reason for the statement and restatement is, the first statement is part of the memo, the second restatement is part of the resolution. But, uh, really, those two documents should have been broken out separately for clarity, uh, and that's our administration's fault.
That was a formatting error.
I do want to share that it is normal and healthy for a municipality to amend their budget throughout the year. In a healthy budgeting process, there may be multiple budget amendments, ideally done in sort of anticipated cycles, and so, uh, it is, the, the fact that a budget has to be amended is not in and of itself, uh, problematic. Um, what we're describing as problematic is sort of the flouting of that sort of communication understanding, and then a formal, legally binding process that can, can make those adjustments, because when we're dealing with a city of sixty-one thousand and many pressing needs, and ideally, growth and, and improvements, there will be modifications that we need to do, especially as you've seen in recent months, when grant funding comes in, we've got to not only receive it, we've got to reallocate it, say, okay, here's what's gonna cover, and then, if that frees up other money, okay, here's where that new money's gonna go. So, I just want to share that this, um, in healthier, more responsible times, we will also see budget amendments, but hopefully in a way that is constructive, well communicated, deliberative, and preemptive, that ideally, we can do it sort of as we see what's coming around the, the bend versus many months, or, or, you know, some various, uh, months and, and payment cycles later, and it looks like the mayor wants to speak...
Well, it's very well said, uh, Mr. President, and really, the executive branch should be, whenever possible, seeking budget amendments in advance to get, uh, authority and permission from city council before it spends money, to spend the money, as opposed to after the fact. Now, there may be times when that's not possible, because there was some sort of emergency expenditure or something, but generally speaking, that permission ought to be given in advance by city council. That's what a proper collaborative relationship between the executive branch and the legislative branch looks like. Uh, the, the other thing I'll note is, um, and it's, well, I thi- I think it's germane enough to this, uh, agenda item.
Go for it.
Is that, um, you know, we're just talking here about the current fiscal year. These are, are excessive spending, spending in excess of budgeted amounts for the current fiscal year, and that's the most urgent, uh, thing for us to identify and address, because that fiscal year continues. But the forensic audit will be looking at the full eight years that have gone by, and I'm sure that it will uncover spending irregularities, not just in the current fiscal year, but in the previous seven plus fiscal years.
Alright, we're on, uh, still the, essentially the, the legal, um, budget amendment. Goodman, Nicholson?
So the question that I ha- I have is, uh, so the community is aware, um, what is the total increase that the administration is seeking from the budgeted amounts to the amendment amount? Is this, I can make sure it's correct with the number that I have added up?
And while you're adding that, Nicholson, and then we'll come back to Goodman.
Uh, I, I know there are some people in the room, um, who associate our current, uh, legal counsel with the previous mayor, wanted to ask, is there an RFP process in the future for legal services to address some of those concerns with the spending and, and how those citizens feel our services have been?
There is. Uh, so we obviously have had a, a lot of urgent things to deal with as a new administration, all of which are urgent, and all of which, if we had a magic wand away, we would be doing immediately, uh, but these things obviously take time, and we have a finite number of staff hours. But yes, we are going to be going out very shortly with an RFP, uh, and it's very important to us as the executive branch that we have a city attorney that represents the city as a whole, not the executive branch, not the mayor, but the city. And as a result, it's very important to us that that RFP process and that selection of a, a law firm or law firms, uh, be done jointly with city council, so that both city council, the legislative branch, and the mayor, the executive branch, be confident and comfortable with the legal representation for the city as a whole. And, uh, in our view, it's unfortunate that wasn't done in recent years, uh, but we think that it's important to do that moving forward. And so yes, we are currently working up an RFP to send out, so that we can solicit responses and proposals from law firms, and then make a collective collaborative joint decision between city council and the mayor about the best legal representation for the city moving forward.
Thank you.
Alright, back to Goodman. Do we know the total?
It should be three hundred and eight thousand dollars, councilman.
Three zero eight.
So, is, is that the, is that the amount that we are increasing, or is that the total amount?
That should be the total increase, whereas to fund this additional appropriations, three hundred and eight thousand dollars is transferred out of general fund balance to the account.
So, regardless of that, so my, back to my main point, why, why are we over budgeted? I- is there any, uh, clarification for the community and the council as to why the amount that we budgeted for legal services is so over budgeted?
So, one example of that would be, um, excessive use of the attorney's time, and when I say excessive, uh, an example that I will give, you may have seen that the attorney was here earlier tonight when we were discussing the ordinance. He was specifically here in case the council had any actual legal questions about the ordinance. Once that item was done, we asked the attorney to, to leave, so that we would not be billed for further time. In the past, that wasn't the case. So that would be an example of why we're so far over budget.
Yes, that's one example. Uh, there, there are countless examples of the previous mayoral administration utilizing outside lawyers for a very wide range of services, some of which frankly did not require legal consultation, but were more routine policy matters. Uh, we believe that we should limit, uh, attorneys, the use of attorneys, who, um, of course, have legal expertise, but are generally quite expensive. We believe that we should limit the city's use of lawyers to where it's absolutely necessary for legal advice, uh, and we should try to restrict their use and avoid their use for routine policy matters. Uh, and so you'll see that, uh, in general, we do not have city attorneys present at the city council meetings, because we don't want to run up bills for city attorneys unnecessarily. Uh, so at the vast majority of meetings that have occurred so far, we've specifically asked the city attorneys not to be here, because we don't want to be billed for time where it's not needed. And tonight, we specifically asked the attorneys to be present for the item about the rehab agreement, since they worked on that, but we also specifically asked them to leave immediately after that agenda item, so we would not continue to incur time expenses from them.
So, to sum it up, uh, the increase in costs is due to, uh, irresponsibility on the previous administration's behalf in the overuse, uh, of, uh, legal counsel.
That's certainly one way to put it, yes.
Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor on this section of the motion? Alright, we're at, um, now, resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, to transfer one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars from youth recreation fund balance, um, for that account to youth recreation fund services, building and land rental. You had heard the mayor on, when he provided an update on his youth recreation strategy, give some context to that at a previous meeting, uh, but mayor administration, you have the floor for context.
Yeah, I, I know we talked about this previously, but the, uh, previous mayoral administration, uh, continued to rent the facility on Gulf Drive for purposes of a youth recreation center, uh, even though there was no budget provided for that. Uh, and so the previous administration incurred seven months of, uh, lease, uh, time at a cost to the city of twenty-six thousand dollars per month, uh, for a total amount in excess of the budgeted, uh, amount by city council of, of a total of a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. One of the first things we did when we came into, and, and I would note, that not only did the city council, previous city council not budget for that hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, but the previous city council actually passed a resolution specifically prohibiting the spending of money for that, uh, youth rec center, and the previous mayoral administration continued to spend money to the tune of twenty-six thousand dollars per month, anyway. Uh, one of the first things that my administration did when we came into office was inform the owner of that facility that we were terminating the lease, uh, and made sure that we were out of there by the end of January, which actually was no small feat, because there was an enormous amount of personal property belonging to the city that was being stored at that facility. So it took a lot of time just to move all of the city's possessions out of there, but we wanted to make sure that we did not incur a single month of expense beyond January, which had already been incurred, because we didn't come into office until January fourth. So we were already on the hook for January's payment, anyway, and we wanted to make sure that we were not on the hook for February or any month beyond that. So that was one of our first orders of business.
Thank you. Councilmembers, uh, Goodman, you have the floor?
So, a- again, I think with the, these, these three agenda items, it, it kind of comes back to a very similar point that I keep making. Um, so again, as we are aware, the tenth council passed a resolution blatantly saying that the previous administration could not use these funds to pay for that building, correct?
Correct.
So, what we are, like, coming to again, with, again, everything that we've gone through so far, is that there's a plain and blatant disregard for the complete other branch that exists in this building. Um, and again, we're, we're seeing how this has manifested in one year, and this is again before the forensic audit. These are the things that we were able to look at, well, by we, the administration, to look at, compile and find, and we are already at hundreds of thousands of dollars just based off of very, very simple decisions of the previous administration to be like, yeah, cool, great, I do not care. And again, at this point, we have incurred so, so much money that has been, uh, not budgeted. So i- i- I just bring it to the community's, uh, awareness that this will probably not be the, uh, the last time that we see things like this in the coming months, solely based out of, not of necessity, but out of just pure, uh, one unmitigated gall.
That is an accurate summary, yes.
Other councilmembers that wish to have the floor? Alright, so what we've got before us, and the speakers list having been exhausted, is, um, the vote will about, about to proceed with is authorizing the city clerk to publish those notices of the propos- these respective proposed budget amendments, so there will be some time, um, for that to, you know, the legal process to adhere to the city charter to, uh, fulfill, and then it'll come back for us to ultimately do the, you know, the final consideration of those budget amendments. So, if there's no further discussion or questions, we're now at, um, proceeding with roll call on, uh, the motion to approve those resolutions authorizing the city clerk. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six shays, no nays.
That motion carries. That motion carries. Proceed away, clerk. With that, is there a motion to approve the resolution to authorize the city to enter into a temporary contract with National Career Group to support the reorganization of city departments?
I make the motion.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. So, we have a motion before us. Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. The day-to-day functions of the previous administration were, in general, not well organized, I think is a understatement. And that's reflected in a variety of HR challenges that we face as we inherit systems that were put in place previously. Some of these include the fact that there are very few, if any, standard operating procedures in place for departments or personnel. Many, if not most, job descriptions have not been updated in many, many years. The previous mayor's administration specifically instructed some employees to do day-to-day activities and focus on day-to-day activities that had, in many cases, literally nothing to do with the person's job title, or stated job duties, or job responsibilities. And perhaps most alarming is the fact that the previous administration was paying a number of employees in amounts in excess of what was budgeted for those employees. We didn't bring that as a separate agenda item this evening, because that's ultimately going to require some budget amendments as well. But we didn't bring that as a separate agenda item this evening, because it's very challenging to know how to handle that, when people have been paid, and frankly, continue to be paid for the time being, in excess of what was budgeted for them.
Mayor Grimaldi, if you'd like to occupy Councilman Parker's seat for the remainder of the meeting for continuity of microphone.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, it's very challenging to handle situations where various city personnel were paid in excess of the amounts budgeted by the previous city council. In some situations, those personnel, those city employees, weren't even aware that they were being paid in excess of the amount budgeted by the previous city council, because, as you might imagine, city employees don't typically, especially if they were hired since the last budget was passed, they don't typically pour over city council minutes and look at budgeted amounts. They assumed that what the previous mayoral administration offered to pay them was an authorized amount. So, we have a lot of challenges when it comes to how human resources and personnel and employees have been structured, and treated, and dealt with. And it's very important that we get these things right, because at the end of the day, the most important resource we as a community have, but we as city government have, is people. And we need to make sure that we're treating people with dignity and respect, but also that we're fully leveraging their talents to the benefit of city residents, to make sure that we're improving city services. And the vast majority of what city government does all depends on city staff. And so, our human resources are critical. It's critical that we structure the organizational structure of City Hall appropriately, and effectively, and efficiently. It's critical that we have clear expectations of city employees in terms of their job titles and job duties, and standard operating procedures. And unfortunately, very little of that has been in place. And we need to get this right, and we need to get it right quickly, particularly as some of these restructuring issues, in terms of the organizational structure, in terms of either changing personnel as needed, or changing positions as needed, will directly impact the upcoming fiscal year, the upcoming budget. And we need to present our mayoral proposal of the budget to city council no later than this May. And so, we have a lot of work to do to make sure that we're making some decisions and proposals around human resource decisions in a very short timeframe, so that we can build some of those decisions into our budget proposal that is due to city council by May. But also, and maybe even more importantly, we need to just make sure, so that we can deliver city services appropriately, that we're getting our management of city employees right, and doing it as quickly as possible, so that we're providing efficient, effective city services to residents, which is what our residents deserve as much as the residents in any other community in Oakland County. And so, it's with that in mind, that we believe we need to bring on a competent, effective, human resources professional and consultant. And we have such a consultant in mind. Our proposal is that we immediately hire that consultant and her firm for a four-week period, and that'll give us time to do an RFP process, so that for the remaining time period, maybe a couple of months after that, we at least have a competitive process. But we wanted to immediately hire this firm, because we don't think we have time to wait for an RFP process. We have urgent HR needs and personnel decisions that need to be made, and we want to bring on what we believe and what we've identified as the best possible firm to manage that, pending an RFP process that will determine whether or not we keep the selected firm that we've identified, or whether we might go in another direction. And without further to do, I'll allow Deputy Mayor Stevens to talk about the specific firm that we've identified, and that we believe is the best firm for the task at hand.
So, I am actually going to let the firm itself do most of the talking. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things that the mayor said. You know, out of all of the items that you've seen on the budget, on the agenda tonight, this is actually the one that brings me the most joy. Like, if you go back and watch the meeting, you will see that as the mayor, as we got to this item, my face lit up. And so, my face lit up, because I'm excited to say that what we have been doing over the course of this last 40 days is just making it. We have one full-time person in our human resources department. We have one additional person who is not a human resources individual, talking about what the mayor said about individuals working outside of their classification. So, that gives you two people who are responsible for 107 active bodies, not including retirees to the city who call from time to time with issues. We don't have standard operating procedures. We don't have updated job descriptions. We don't, we don't, we don't. And so, now we have the opportunity to say, not only do we want to bring someone in to immediately bridge the gap, we want to bring someone in who can help us say, okay, look, over the course of the next two to three months, not only am I going to help you bridge that temporary gap, I'm going to help you restructure, realign, get all of your job descriptions updated, get your compensation and wage study updated, get your mission statements for each individual department updated, so that you are moving and you are aligned in the direction that you need to be, so that you can provide the services that you want to provide. And so, with that, National Career Group is the organization that we would like to enter into with. And we do have Ms. Nadia Sellers here, if she would like to come up and tell us a little bit more about you, because I'm so excited.
Okay, well, I've been here since six o'clock, so. I don't even know how to address the council. Do I just say council? Okay, well.
What feels right.
Thank you for having me, all of you.
Mr. Johnson, could you help adjust the microphone, so it's?
Thank you. I'm actually the CEO of National Career Group. We are a firm that's located in Oak Mississauga. We have offices in Burbank, California, and Chicago. We are 300, associated strong, and about 25 in-house professionals. And what we do is we help to save money. Human resources is the foundation of every house. You have talent, you have infrastructure, and you have equipment. But without talent, there's no need for equipment or infrastructure. That's what we do, and I'm hoping to do a great job for you, to allow you to get your city moving forward, and to save you money, and to provide a blueprint of what your human resources department should look like, should function like, and then hire an HR director for you that can move that department forward.
Thank you. I want to give the floor to our subcommittee chair in finance and personnel. We have Councilman Nicholson with the floor.
Hi there. Full disclosure, I'm a senior professional in human resources and run my own consulting company as well, so this is kind of my sweet spot. I heard Deputy Mayor Stevens speak about, talking about wage studies. Is the wage study included in this one-month engagement?
So, the short answer to that is, eh, obviously pieces of the wage study will be included and done. But the idea is that this one-month engagement is to really get us up to speed. Again, one person, we can barely keep the train on the tracks. This is to actually build out the capacity that we would need to actually be able to go forward and complete a full wage study. And I will say that Ms. Sellers is underselling herself in that there are a number of items that she's already helped us with, just in our back-and-forth conversation. And to date, she, we owe her nothing.
Great. Thank you for that. Yeah, I've seen some of your preliminary work, and to me, it looks great.
Let me ask you a question, though. You asked if the wage study is included. Believe it or not, I think you have a system that can allow us to pull out the wage study. So, my firm is based on a lean approach. I keep my company lean, so we can stay in business. So, if there's something that I can provide for the city during the time that I'm here, absolutely, you will get it.
Thank you. Thanks. So, the system in which you're referencing, is there more?
Placidity. You have a placidity system. I'm not sure if it was integrated with your last system. We will be looking into that.
Great. Yeah, one other thing, just, I mean, because we're both here, and for the sake of, budget is budget, right? The fact that we went over some of these, in salaries for some of these roles, is, you know, is wrong. However, when I look at what the actual salaries that were offered, as full disclosure, I want to be very clear, in my opinion, in my experience, those dollar amounts are not obscene dollar amounts. I know it was not done in a way that was appropriate, but for somebody of, especially knowing some of the people who have filled these roles, to the extent in their experience vis-à-vis what we're looking for someone to do, from my knowledge, in each one of these roles, those amounts are probably market, or slightly below market. I, you know, in the past, having some of these RFPs that were put out for staffing services, my firm decided not to apply, because these dollar amounts were way too low, and it would not have been feasible for us to find a candidate that would have been qualified. So, I just want to lay that line on there, is that we may see some of these numbers come back after a wage study is done, and we would be in line with what was decided to pay some of these folks. So, I don't want to incite immediate action. I'm hoping that some of these findings will be in line with what, where we currently are at.
Deputy Mayor.
And if I may, Councilman, that was exactly the reason, as the mayor alluded to, that we did not bring forth any budget amendments dealing specifically with personnel. We wanted to have this firm onboard to help us through that, because we believe that you're actually probably right about that. But again, the fact of the matter is, it's not just, oops, we overspent. It is, we blatantly just did something, instead of coming to council and saying, these numbers need to be changed, this is why, it was just, we're just going to do it.
The 107, too, that's noted in the resolution, is not just W-2ed employees, that also includes contractors, correct?
So, actually, that does not include contractors. That includes court workers.
Court.
So, we actually handled the courts, yes.
Do you know what that breakdown would be if it was just city barring not the court? So, we can be clear, because I've heard, I like for people to know, full disclosure, how many W-2ed employees the city actually has currently?
Ballpark, it's, I want to say it's 60/40.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Goodman. Councilman James.
I'd like to say I fully support Resolution 10. I think it's a great move, getting us started in the direction that we know we have to go. And so, I think everything here is perfectly in order, perfectly needed, and I support it 100%.
I feel the urgency that we should actually proceed with voting on this this evening. I think that council would feel comfortable with that. But it is your call. I just want to share for the community's reference, the two action items that this motion calls for. It's that the Pontiac City Council authorizes the mayor to enter into a temporary contract with the National Career Group for a period not to exceed one month, and a cost not to exceed $16,000, to assist with reorganizing the city of Pontiac HR department, and also reorganizing city departments in general. And for the resolve, that the city will issue an RFP, or request for proposals, for services to include not only those listed above, but also recruitment, onboarding, and other HR-associated needs, the results of which are to be brought before council for action by the time that the temporary contract with National Career Group ends. So, that's sort of really what the action is before us, and the motion before us. Any further discussion?
I want to explain, just in case we do get to a vote. I'll be voting no, if it gets there. As the chair of that commission, I would have liked to see the RFP details, rather than just a contract coming forward, unless no one else applied for an RFP.
Well, we didn't do an RFP for the temporary contract. In terms, because we didn't think we had time to go out and get an RFP, as I said, because we wanted to immediately get somebody onboard. In terms of the, and we have the ability to do that if it's needed on an emergency basis. However, we're doing an RFP for services beyond that four-week period. And when we get those responses, we will be bringing them before you, as the committee chairperson and the committee, as well as before city council as a whole. But we specifically decided to do this resolution as two action items. One is the short-term four-week contract, because we think we urgently need to get started on this. And then the second piece is the RFP, so that we can get competitive responses and proposals to bring before the committee and before city council as a whole.
So, the resolution is two items but put together?
That's right. And we don't yet have responses to the RFP, because the RFP itself has not yet gone out, because we wanted to get your authorization to put together an RFP and send it out. And once we get the responses to the RFP, we will bring them before the committee and council.
Councilman Nicholson, can I?
Yes, absolutely, please.
Councilman Nicholson, National Career Group is not a staffing agency. We're a professional service agency. There's two differences. A staffing agency can really focus on temporary labor. We focus on policy procedures and permanent placement services. So, and also, when you take a look at wage assessment, there was a pre-COVID and a post-COVID. We're in the post-COVID. Not a lot of people want to go to work in a traditional office anymore. And that alone has created an increase in salaries to attract top talent who are willing to go back into the room, as opposed to working remote.
I want to also provide context that the mayor and deputy mayor did reach out to council leadership, and made a particular point of being especially proactive with council. They could have entered into a temporary contract, and not necessarily even come to council, depending on what the threshold would have been. And so, the intention was to sort of provide that additional layer of transparency, but also allowing that council consent and feedback. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing no further discussion, we'll move into voting on approval of the resolution to authorize the city to enter into a temporary contract with National Career Group to support the reorganization of city departments. Roll call, Clerk Doyle. Rutherford.
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We've made it through the business portion of the agenda. I want to salute National Career Group CEO for being with us as the last item of business. So, I salute you, Madam CEO. Underneath your chairs are, a round of applause for National Career Group. That's very nice. Career Group. That's very nice. Underneath your chairs, from the Pontiac City Council, in addition to a heart of love for Pontiac, is some calories and sugar. So if that helps you make it through the next phase, it's now public comment time. We'll keep order in the chamber. And President Protem Carrington, you have the floor.
There's a lot of individuals on this list, so I'm gonna try to, if I don't see them in the audience, I won't call their name. Yeah. Mr. Romaine, is it Romaine Johnson? Ms. Karen Jerkison?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience, and those of you at home watching by television.
Order in the chamber.
I'm gonna ask it one more time.
Citizen has the floor.
With respect to the chair, would you please allow public comment be moved to the front of the agenda? This lady over here had two naps. A lot of the folk that he just called went home. How many of you folk in here would love to see, raise your hands, how many would love to see this go forward to the front of the agenda? See what I mean? This is what we want as citizens who come here and express our concerns. We don't want to sit here all night. At least, I don't care. I got plenty of time. Now, I want to go one step further and say to Mayor Grimal, that I applaud you in the way you bring forward information, relevant, pertinent information. I applaud this council for your expertise in being able to ask those questions. That's very important to know about before you decide on what you're going to do with it. You know, this is what happened to our last council. They were so busy counting the dollars, they should have been watching the pennies, because the pennies is what got spent. Now, if they'd have stopped fighting and bickering every week, they would have seen what was going on on the other side of the room. But they decided that they would fight rather than do our government. And that's the whole thing in a nutshell. We got two people that came in here tonight that challenged the mayor to what he's gonna do, how he's gonna do it. That man knows what he's gonna do already, and I'm happy for him. And I'm gonna back him up 110%, and I'm gonna back each of you up 110%, because I respect your intelligence, your intellect, to finding out what, especially you, Macau, knowing what we need and get the answers to the questions. I wanted to speak on the bond issue, Mayor, as it related to the rehab agreement. That's a very important issue, but my time, I don't have enough time to really try and express my concern for that. But these contracts and these jobs that are coming out through our different departments, I'm happy to know that each of you ask questions, especially you, Councilwoman James and Carrington. You are asking very relevant and pertinent questions.
I'm sorry to stop you. If the audience is talking while a fellow citizen is talking, I'm gonna have to stop the clock to allow order be restored. And that'll be an ongoing thing. I don't want to make you stay longer. Thank you. You have the floor still.
Very good. With the last few seconds of my time, I think we should look at what Quincy Stewart brought forward tonight. Quincy brought some very, very important information, and we should get a resolution together and salute him for that, because there ain't too many people in this town left that knows the history the way Quincy does. He knows a lot of information and has a wealth of information he can bring forward. And we need to look at what we can do to continue having him come forward with that type of information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Brittany James. John, is it School Hurt? School Hurt, I'm sorry.
Sorry, never done this before, never been to any of these meetings. So, really, I'm sure I'm gonna sound kind of dumb, but I just came here because multiple times, I've gotten irate contacting City Hall for just silly, minuscule city services. And 100% of the time, I haven't had any resolution on those at the time that I needed. And not only that, I've gotten more mad, and things just snowball because of the people that I finally do either finally talk to, which happened two days ago, and then they get in an argument with me and challenge me on the phone, and now I'm cussing at them, and she hangs up on me. And it's the employees that I, the very few that I had gotten a hold of on the phone. When I've come in person, everything's been great. I've talked to building services. They helped me find out about a water main thing that was wrong with my house, flooded my basement, but he was great to talk to. Talked to the tax guy the other day. He was great to talk to. But over the phone, usually under the last administration, I'd call, I'd never get a response. I'd leave seven different people. I ended up calling the cops to come out, and I told them, I'm like, nobody from City Hall has called me back. This was a couple days after an incident. Now I gotta call the cops, because somebody's, you know, messing with my easement. And I don't know who else to call, because nobody from City Hall is answering my questions. So, and it actually, now, the mayor with you, it sounds like there's gonna be some resolution on, because it specifically seems like an HR personnel problem. And like I said, it's happened 100% of the time with the few times that I've called City Hall for basic services. And I think that's just what the city government is mainly supposed to do, is help get small things done for the people that live in the city. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Melissa, is it Moser Sperring? Good evening.
It's me, Melissa, from Oak Hill and Ottawa Park Cemeteries. I come a couple times a month. So, I come with the same agenda every time, right? Like, we love the cemeteries, my bosses and I. I'm the manager. I see both Oak Hill and Ottawa Park. I have a staff of currently seven to 10 people. We're about to ram up and start doing the spring cleanup, which means we're gonna take off all the grave blankets off everybody's graves. We also will be starting with the mowing and the leave mulching. And I just really need the council to help back us, I guess. I have quite a lot of questions from today's conversations back and forth. I have a lot of questions. And if I can make one point, I did send an email last week to every council member, and I only received one reply. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gloria Miller?
I'm gonna say good evening, but it probably won't be one when I get done. First of all, for four years, I sat up at that podium, and I told the citizens of Pontiac, basically, that money was being taken. And some people says, what is wrong with, what the anger? Now you guys see the anger? We're gonna find out more money's missing. More money's missing. This is an eight-year deal. I only been here four. And I refuse to have people to say, what happened? Mr. Goodman, the reason the mayor were able to do what she did, because she did what she wanted to do, because no one held her accountable. And that's why, no disrespect to Mr., the prior mayor, but the first thing he should have did when he got in here, remove some of these people. Because she didn't do it alone. She didn't do this alone. It took somebody to do this. The council did do their job. We had resolution. We were fuss with her on the floor. She told us what she wasn't gonna do, and guess what? She didn't do them. Don't cut me off, Mike, wherever you at up there, Phil. Don't cut me off. Yeah, don't cut me off, because I'm not done yet. I'm for righteousness. I talk to my constituents every day, and I told them what was going on in City Hall. It's not surprising to do, my constituents are one that know me. I told them what was going on here. I believe in transparency. And I also have to say this. You're paying bills that you don't know what you got. You're working in the blind. The forensic audit should have been, and there's no disrespect to you, Mayor, but when you had your transition time, I didn't put in three or four mayors. They came in with their team. You should have came in here, because we were sending you signals that this place was in trouble, that 10th council. That you should have came in with a forensic audit in the first day. I wouldn't have sat in that chair, which believes me to understand, I don't understand. The mayor had a U-Haul truck here. She took out legal federal files. Right now, President Trump is in trouble for that right now. So, okay, can I have some of my minutes back? Just, I lost my thought. Michael, just for that. With that being said, I'm gonna say this. And they talk about transparency. Now, it was alleged, but it can be proven as well. It was alleged, and I don't want to call anybody, I'm just gonna state, I'm gonna put it out there. There was Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford, you been sanctioned for abuse of power. And it was brought forward to you, and the council up here didn't even handle it. Now you guys just fast the conduct, rule of conduct, before you answer. Sometime when I ask you something, I already know the answer. So be careful how you answer. Why didn't you bring that forward to the people that she has some citation, allegedly, for abuse of power from some residents, since she's been in office? Transparency. That's why I said, when you talk about one council, you can't walk in our shoes until you do our jobs. It takes a lot to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Maxi, if he's still here?
And as a point of personal privilege, I'm using the lavatory, very briefly.
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac. Citizens of large and governance. Another happy day in my life. I was very proud to hear of that. Rendezvous with Pontiac, Mr. Esma Woods, a poet, a philosopher, and a writer, standing on the shoulders of the 19th century, when Pontiac first began to make its history, and it was written. And along came Quincy Stewart, standing on the shoulders of Esma Woods. And after that, Rosa Richardson, standing on the shoulders. We have so much to be proud of. Honor your heroes. Now, all of you know I'm military, 30 years, most are military, but I had to say that because it's all black history. This shirt here, thank you, Pontiac, for honoring our heroes. Thank you. Army, Navy, Marines, Navy Coast Guard. Secondly, I spoke to you last week about this book, The Only Syndicated. Do you understand me? Only syndicated, black-owned comic book in the United States of America. Fast forward, I'm saying that we need to get these books to the 4,000 students that we have here in Pontiac, from the K grade, not K grade, but from the 7th grade, out up through high school. We need to get this out. And I talk about raising that $100,000 later. All the businessmen in the city have been raising and raising, raising their salaries and whatever monies that don't turn around in the city. 11 times, we'll talk about that. Now, quickly, telephone number, 248-762-4953. The state rep, myself, not myself, let me back up, organization, not by myself. We are asking that, parents of you listening, 7 to 8, ages 9, 8 to 10, and 10 to 12, we want to offer an essay contest. Write on your famous military black heroes, first, second, and third class. On Friday, I will be downstairs in the lobby between the hours of 2:00 and 4:00, if you wish to come down and write an essay according to the ages I asked you about, 7 to 8, 8 to 10, and 10 to 12. We've got to get our kids involved. We can, you know, talk, talk, talk. We got to get them involved. Again, Mr. Mayor, I'll say it every time, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you. We have more to come. My time is running out, so next week, I'll have something else for you, tell you how much it's gonna cost the businessmen in the City of Pontiac. It's gonna cost you $100,000 to do our 4,000 students. All of you together, you pull from us, let us pull from you. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Billy Swazer.
Don't be making jokes, I might make jokes with you. Good evening. I'm Billy Swazer. I'm a Pontiac resident, and I'm currently, recently was appointed to City of Pontiac Retired Employees Association treasurer. City of Pontiac Retired Employees Association is a union. I'm here to speak about the $4,000 permanent GERS pension increase. In 2011, the emergency manager terminated all the benefits of the retirees, healthcare, life insurance, vision, hearing, and another one. And last year, Dij Waterman promised on TV to continue the pension with variables. This plan was taken out of the city council subcommittee and was not given to an actuary, which it should have been. Because the law requires, if you want to give a benefit, you have to have an actuary study to know how much it's gonna cost. She called GERS and requested for Director Devin Wilson, once wrote the proposal, which was for the $400 permanent pension increase. Because we have a adjudicated settlement agreement. That means it's already went to a judge, they came to a settlement, judge reviewed it, and he adjudicated in 2018. The union expected that immediately the city would act on it, and we would get the benefits that they had promised us. But they didn't. The lawyer for the law firm had quit. They didn't know how to do it. So they had to get somebody. My thought is that we should be able to have, we, the retirees, should be able to have the $4,000 permanent pension increase. It was given to us by the emergency manager in lieu of healthcare. So he said people could be able to use that $400, and they could buy them healthcare, and they did. But also, but also, now it has ended. On February 1st, we got our insurance for some of us retirees, and some people didn't. If you didn't get it, you're gonna have to call Darren Carrington and go to the committee. Just one, before we end this, I want to let you know that the council appointed, you have an appointee that sits at your spot at the VIBA table, is Linda Watson. You can have your spot back. You do not have to let Linda sit there the rest of the years. I'm gonna write this over, and next week, I'll be back, and I'll speak more clearly about it. But us retirees want the $400 to continue, and we think that we have the, the city GERS has the money. They had to have the money in the beginning.
That does conclude your time.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms., is it Shay, Shailen Ray?
Shailen Ray.
All right, okay. Mr. James Sibish?
This is assigned to Black History Month. Guess who's coming to dinner? The defiant ones, to serve with love. Sidney Pottery, 1927, 2022. He wasn't the president, a governor. But he left an incredible legacy to the citizens of not just Pontiac, but America. For those that remember him, his legacy will go on. A notation that came from my, one of my churches, a Baptist church. Left this notation today. God bless, has blessed and his blessing. Everyone. No exceptions.
Sir, I will forfeit the rest of your time if you choose me to.
If I have three minutes, I want my three minutes. And the last statement.
Sir, this is a Pontiac City Council meeting. I preside at the Pontiac City Council and administer the council rules as I see best.
You see fit.
And yes, and for our public comments, there are a time limit of three minutes. But if you choose to stand mute for upwards of a minute or more, I will rule that out of order.
I'm giving you time to think about what I'm saying. And the last statement is, are you listening?
Sir, I will.
Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus.
Please consider this a warning for future public comments. I will consider that a forfeiture of your public comment time. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, sir. At this time, we have no more public comments.
All right, we now move into closing comments. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Just, just a couple of very brief and quick announcements. We are fortunate in that we have received some grant dollars to make improvements to our two senior centers in town. The Bowen Center and the Ruth Peterson Center. And it's very important as we go about seeking to make some of these improvements and capital repairs. And it's not, it's not an enormous amount of money, but it's enough money to make a meaningful difference and impact. It's very important as we go about looking at ways to utilize those funds in a way that benefits seniors who utilize these facilities, that we solicit impact from the community as a whole, and especially those seniors who actually utilize the Bowen Center and Ruth Peterson Center. So I want to announce that we've got a couple of town hall meetings coming up to solicit that community feedback. So next Friday, February 25th, we will have a town hall meeting at the Ruth Peterson Center from 3:00 to 4:30 PM in the afternoon. Again, that's 3:00 to 4:30 PM, Friday, February 25th, at the Ruth Peterson Center. And then the following Monday, February 28th, the following Monday, again, February 28th, from 3:00 to 4:30 PM at the Bowen Center. And so we encourage folks to come out and engage in this conversation with us about how best to utilize those dollars to improve the facilities at both the Bowen Center and the Ruth Peterson Center for the benefit of our seniors. The other thing I want to emphasize again is I urge folks to apply for some of the vacancies that we have on our commissions. I know I spoke about this a week ago. We're going to start making appointments to these commissions in the very near future. So please immediately get in your applications. And those commissions that are most urgent, that we'll be making appointments to, to fill vacancies are the Historic District Commission, the Arts Commission, the Planning Commission, and the Marijuana Commission. So I encourage folks who are interested in those positions to apply as soon as possible. We're going to be making decisions as early as later this week. So please get in your applications as soon as possible. You can do so by going to the city's website. And under the City Clerks section, there's a place where you can apply online. So again, if you have questions, feel free to reach out to me via email, or reach out to the office by telephone. You can email me at mayor, M-A-Y-O-R, at pontiac.m-i.us. Look forward to getting your applications. We've already gotten some really great applicants who have sent in applications. But I wanted to extend again the opportunity for more folks to apply if you're interested. Thanks so much.
Thank you. We are now at the City Clerk's closing comments. You have the floor, Clerk Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Often I do not give closing comments unless there's some information to share with about the clerk's office business. But I feel it necessary to say something this evening. I want to personally thank Mayor Grimal for his transparency about the budget and personnel matters. As a city resident, it is refreshing to see a mayor that is focused on providing quality services to city residents. As many of you know, I was often attacked as a professional by the previous administration and attorneys because I would not engage in backdoor deals or illegal activities. They tried to make it seem that I was not qualified for this position, when in reality, as a public administration professional, I have been insisting that the city has to have standing operating procedures and must adhere, must adhere to the charter. I am thankful that the truth about what was happening in our city was shared with the citizens tonight. Also, I would encourage my fellow city employees to always do the right thing. That is what public service is about. And sometimes that means you have to take a stance. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to council closing comments. District 1's Councilwoman, Melanie Rutherford.
Good evening. I'm so popular today. Yes, popular. So I normally have some great comment by some great quote from some great black person, but I'm going to keep it gutter today. I want to apologize that I refused to get into the rumor mill about he said, she said. That's not what this council is about. I want to apologize because my attitude don't fit what particular people don't like to see. I can't do it. What I can do is say, if I don't feel that I'm fit to serve on the board, that I remove myself. So that's just to clear up what was said earlier. If a sanction was mentioned or entered, I'd love to see it because I don't have it. What I did do is, because of my own personal reasons, removed myself from certain things because I'm not mature yet to handle it. And I want to serve the council well, and the citizens too. That's the first thing. Cleared that up. Number two, we have the mobile office coming to you at the Bowen Community Center. That's going to be April 26, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. That means you can come from the Michigan Secretary of State. You can get your stuff renewed, like your license, your registration. What else can you get renewed? Your boats, and stuff like that. There's 50 spots that are available, and that's going to be at the Bowen Center. On Saturday, I had the honor and the privilege with Mayor Grimal to go to a balloon event at where the actual murder that happened last week. It was truly a sad occasion, what happened at the Phoenix Center Plaza. I want to encourage us all to continue to spread love and to give prayers to the Mays family. Lastly, but certainly not least, my meeting was moved, the coffee and conversation, to March the 12th. That's March the 12th, at the Alley Cat. I apologize, but I had a family issue. And to that, I say, good night.
Thank you. District 2's councilperson, the Honorable Brett Nicholson, closing comments.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks again to the administration for another week of responsiveness and transparency. We had some snowstorms. Those snowstorms, as the, the weather turns, the snow disappears, and it reveals what the havoc that plows caused on our roads, especially roads that haven't been well-maintained and been patched and patched and patched over the years. So with that, please know, and thank you so much to the administration.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. We'll stop the clock for audience members to get in order. Councilman Nicholson has the floor.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Thanks for being very clear about some of the challenges that we face in patching these. In cold weather climates, those hot patches don't always adhere the way that we want them to. So it's not a viable solution to patch in that, in that freezing, in those freezing temperatures. There is a solution. It's cold patch. The city has worked very hard to procure more cold patch. So you'll see crews out in getting those done. There was a very treacherous pothole that was between Districts 1 and 2 that caused multiple, multiple, multiple issues. Thank you to the Sheriff's Department for responding to that matter in a way that they really didn't have to, but did us a solid and got some cones out in front of those so people could see that immediately, until DPW was on the scene to get that cold patch as secured as we possibly could. Be careful, right? We won't be able to get to all of those as quickly, but please do also report those. We, we need to know about them. Don't always assume that the Sheriff's Department is always relaying all of those situations to us. When I called, the dispatcher told me, oh, wow, we have been out there a number of times, haven't we? So please do contact your councilperson. We are always here to help in, in supporting getting some of those city services out there as quickly as possible. I know especially, this happened on a Sunday. From Saturday into Sunday is when the snow melted. So people were not sitting in their offices as usual. But we can always get to them and get those responses out in a faster way. We had a finance and personnel meeting that was great on Thursday. We will have those again monthly. But it was really nice to get all of that information upfront, get some, some great groundwork running. A lot of us on that, that commission, myself and Councilwoman James, had a lot of really great questions rolling, got our, our, our hands really, you know, well into the matters and what we have ahead of us. Both of those, those, those areas, of course, have tremendous change that we're going to see over the next few years. So please bear with us, ask questions, come to those meetings, come to this meeting. We'll give our update, and those minutes will be likely in your next agenda so you can see what we talked about. Get more information there. Thank you, District 2. You've been really great about filling out those community projects. We've got 30 responses on our community projects ideas, which is tremendous. And a lot of those people did also volunteer to be part of the feasibility group that will meet now that we have all of those ideas. We can dig through those ideas, see what really makes sense, what we can include, as many of them as we can include as possible. Please do continue to sign up for Earth Day. We want a representative from every single street in District 2. And that, those signups are on my council page, Nextdoor, and Facebook.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Goodman, the Honorable Representative for District 3.
Keep it extremely brief. Hope everyone's having a wonderful evening. Two things. Reminder that the District 3 meeting will be next week, next Thursday on Zoom. Again, that information will come out, well, should be already out on the, my council Facebook page. And I'll also make sure to reach out to the IT department, put down the website as well. That way, those links are always available. And then secondly, just a little action item experience, experiment that I have for everyone here. To those of you who live in Pontiac or have to drive through a majority of it to go wherever you're headed tonight, keep track of what streetlights may be out. I was driving home from last week's council meeting. And for those of you who may or may not know where I live, I live on Kennet. So for me to get home, hit Woodward, get Baldwin, well, Woodward, Oakland, or Caesar Chavez, Baldwin, home. And driving home of Baldwin, there was an entire stretch essentially from, I want to say about Treadent to Mount Cal, where almost all the lights are out. So everyone who is going home today, I give you the experiment of, if you're driving home with someone else, have them write it down. Or if you can remember it, write it down and report it to the city. That way, we are aware. Because again, if I'm driving home and can see these things, I guarantee many of you and many of us here on council can do it as well. So that is an experiment that I have for everyone. But other than that, please have a great evening.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Kathleen James, District 4.
Okay, first of all, I would like to commend Quincy Stewart for his absolutely fantastic presentation tonight. I was extremely proud of Quincy. We go back a long way when he was still in high school. And I would like to say to him, he has, you have become the decent, outstanding citizen in your community that I hoped you could be. And so I really commend you today, and I'm so proud of you. Secondly, the Pontiac 4th District Community Council. Our Zoom meeting will be, will take place on February the 24th. That's a Thursday night at 6:00 PM. And if you would like to participate, please make sure that I have your email address. You can email me at kjames@poniac.m-i.us. That's kjames@poniac.m-i.us. Also, the Parks and Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee. Our February meeting is February, is Monday, February the 28th. So if you would like to take part in that, our meeting will be on February 28th at noon, and the public is invited to attend. The community cleanup is scheduled for the week of March, the, of April, excuse me, the 22nd, and there's still a lot of activity going on for residents of District 4. If you are interested in participating in that cleanup, please give me a call. We don't have a sign-in sheet, a signup sheet yet, but please give me a call if you would like to participate, and I can fill you in on the plans that we have for District 4. The other comment, how much time do I have left?
Minute and five.
I do want to say that the comments that were made about the youth center. One of the concerns I have is that the council, the previous council, voted to not approve the continuing to use that center without really coming up with a plan for the children of Pontiac on what the alternative was going to be. And I've got a problem with that because our kids need recreation. Our kids need recreation. That, you know, that has to be a given. We need to address the problem that we've got children in our city who are at risk. Our recreation, we, those programs are what we do to give those kids, send them in the right direction. It's not optional. We have to have programs, youth programs for our children. We can't just cut that off, and, you know, because all kinds of things are going on. We've got to provide recreational programs for our kids, and that can't be optional.
Thank you. Again, we give our condolences to Councilman William Parker Jr. and his family on the loss of his mother-in-law. For closing comments, President Pro Tem William A. Carrington from District 6.
Thank you, President McGinnis. What's happening in District 6 in the coming weeks is Ruth Peterson Senior Center. Is their annual Black History Program and Exhibit, which is Thursday, February 17th, 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. Also during Black History Month, they would be providing lunch. So while you eat lunch, please go take a look at the displays and exhibits at the Ruth Peterson Center. Also, on February 19th, 11:00, even to 5:00 PM at the Ruth Peterson, it's a Black History Month vendor event Saturday. So please go out and support African-American businesses in the city of Pontiac. I also like to thank Quincy Stewart for his beautiful historical perspective when it comes to the talent that the city of Pontiac has made and supported over the years. I learned a lot tonight just by listening to his presentation. I want to say one thing about where we're at right now. Less than two months into serving the city, the Pontiac City Council members, as well as, as the mayor office. Pressure is what turns coal into a diamond. Right now in this city, it's like a piece of coal. As a community, you must believe in the process. So I'm sincerely asking this community to believe in this process. Allow this city to become a diamond once again. So I'm asking you to take this ride with us. It's going to be, it's going to be, it's not going to be a straight and smooth path. But as long as this, this, this council and mayor team come to you with transparency of what's been happening and the decisions that we make moving forward, I'm asking you to have faith and hope in what we got to do here. I believe in this city. I love this city. And I think each and every, every councilperson on this dais have the same energy and passion that I have in making sure this city is the best city, not only in Oakland County, but United States. only in Oakland County, but the United States of America. And good night.
Thank you, sir. I want to thank my District Seven neighbors and constituents who came out last night, very cold, very icy, and it was Valentine's Day, but they showed the love and shared the love with one another at our first East Side Community Meeting, and that invitation is open each month, the second Monday of each month, 7 to 9 PM, at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church at 351 Prospect Street. All are welcome. Please spread the word, invite neighbors. So that's March 15th, excuse me, Monday, March 14th at 7 PM is that next meeting. February 6th to March 19th, Drawings from Earth, Black History Art Exhibit by artist Carol Morisot at the Pontiac Creative Arts Center. And specifically on February 26th, they have an artist talk and reception with the artist at the Creative Arts Center from 6 to 9 PM. On February 16th, that's the deadline for the Pontiac Public Library's Black History Month Essay Contest. And now through February 21st, Pontiac United's Black History Creative Arts Contest submissions are accepted until the 21st. $100 gift card, Dinner with the Mayor prize, and that's sponsored by Oakland Forward. On February 23rd, Amazon is offering in-person info sessions on hiring opportunities, and that's at Antioch Missionary Baptist Church, 318, 318, 318 Auburn Avenue, 12 to 4 PM. They're intending to have Uncle Jerry's and Soul Rolls to Go food from the neighborhood offered to those attendees. February 24th, Oakland University is hosting Dr. Jeanetta Cross Brazel, who conducted the Pontiac Oral History Project in the 1970s. And so this is a follow-up where that professor is giving both an in-person and virtual presentation. The Healthy Affair, offering free health screenings for Oakland County residents, is Saturday, February 26th, from 8:30 AM to 12 PM. And that's enough announcements for now. I just want to thank you for investing and caring in our city, for you to share these many hours on a wintery evening demonstrates your commitment to Pontiac and moving us forward. And I really want to thank President Pro Tem Carrington for your comments about the bigger picture. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no discussion, roll call. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yep.
That motion carries. This meeting stands adjourned at 9:48 PM. And with that, don't leave any candy abandoned underneath the chairs.